We have a long meeting tonight, so I will be taking a break sometime. At point, no, uh, let us take a few minutes so we can regather our thoughts.
I have someone coming to the house like about six forty-five, seven o'clock. And Ron's not here, he's at work. I don't know what time he'll be home. So if I lock myself out, will I get in trouble for stepping away?
No, just, just say you gotta step away for a second.
Okay.
So just step away and come right back on.
Okay. Don't want to get myself in trouble.
No, you're okay. In fact, depending upon the agenda goals, we'll probably take a break sometime around seven. If my voice holds up.
Well, poor Sean sounded pretty bad.
Oh, I've got that thyroid nodule that's compressing against my larynx. So it's a, it's a large nodule. So it's causing some hoarseness.
Are they gonna take it out?
I have to have a biopsy on Thursday.
I had to have mine removed because mine was doing the same.
Yep. Yeah, my thyroid's enlarged too, so it's not just the, the nodule, it's a large, the nodule's big.
You don't sing, do you?
I do.
I tried singing and I would go.
Well, that's why I'm not singing right now. All right, we're actually after five thirty here, so waiting for, we have a corner, but waiting for Robin to, uh, get on the video. There she is. And waiting for Chris to get on video. We'll get about another minute to resend them, we'll go.
Ready whenever you are.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Robin.
Hi, Robin.
Hello, everyone.
There we go. All right, good evening, everybody. This is our city council study session for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Welcome. And for the governor's emergency proclamation twenty dash zero five and twenty dash twenty-eight. And stay safe, stay healthy. The city of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings this time. City of Auburn Resolution number five five eight one designates the city of Auburn meeting locations for all regular, special study sessions of the city council and committees and boards and commissions of the city to be held as virtual until Washington governor, Washington's governor authorizes local governments to conduct in-person meetings. And with that, Teresa, please call.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J Raj.
Excuse?
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'm going to briefly turn the meeting over to Mayor Backus.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmembers, this evening you have received a statement and we have all agreed to read a portion of that statement that will be released as a unified statement from council and mayor. Councilmember J Raj, as you heard, is not here this evening. His comment was to be, uh, statement number three. We will move from statement number two to statement number four. So as soon as Deputy Mayor Decourcy has gone, Councilmember Trout Manuel, you will say your piece and we will record Councilmember J Raj's pieces to be inserted into that statement. Okay, so, uh, we will begin with Councilmember Sterns and councilmembers, if you would be ready for your piece shortly after your fellow councilmember has finished theirs. Councilmember Stern, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Uh, the city of Auburn is a place where all people should feel welcome and safe. This is an inclusive community and we have zero tolerance for hate and racism.
Deputy Mayor, you are muted.
I am sorry, thank you. We must all condemn the acts of hate and violence occurring with the rising incidence of anti-Asian hate crimes in our country.
During the COVID nineteen pandemic, discriminatory and hatred filled, filled it, rhetoric has put Asian Americans and Pacific Islander people, persons, family and community and businesses at risk.
We condemn all racism, xenophobia and intolerance against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders.
I apologize, but I have lost my place. I'm looking for the statement. Can you remind me where it is?
So it was sent to you by Kalen Brady on Friday. I can forward it to you if you need it. Councilmember Brown?
That would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Let me find it and I will send it. It should be on its way.
And I assume I'm supposed to read the position six.
That's correct, yes.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor. So we all have a responsibility to protect against intolerance actions of hate against anyone in our city, including our Asian and Pacific Islander communities.
There are systems in place to ensure offenders face consequences for their hateful actions, and we encourage victims to come forward and report their experience to local law enforcement.
We stand in solidarity with members of the Asian community who continue to experience fear and intimidation, and we pledge to do everything in our power to fight racism of any form within our city. Thank you, councilmembers. Deputy Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for participating with your statements. We will move on to our agenda items for council discussion this evening, and the first item on the agenda is our Police Advisory Committee PAC presentation with Chief O'Neill and Pastor Lambert.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm gonna turn the presentation over this time to Pastor Lambert, who is the co-chair of the Police Advisory Committee.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am honored to stand here and represent the various and diverse voices that are represented on, on the PAC. I'm going to open up my presentation now, and I'm not sure if that, if the tech team there has a copy or if we need to play it from my computer.
We do not have it here, Pastor Lambert, so if you want to take control of the screen.
Well, give me just a moment, and I will do that. I think I'm almost there. Technology is our friend. Technology is our friend. Technology is our friend. Okay, I have it open on my computer, and if someone could give me a hint as to how to take control. Oh, share my screen. I believe we should be seeing it all together. Please tell me if you can see it now.
Yes. Pastor, you may want to, um, let's see, which one is it that they need to do to remove the? If you hit play, that should move you into, there you go. Perfect. Beautiful.
Well, now I'll, I'll try to wax eloquent again on a very serious subject uh, because I don't want anyone to be offended, nor do I want us to make the mistake that other cities have made by making, uh, grand statements with very little follow-up. I appreciate being able to work with our police chief and mayor and members of city council in trying to bring, uh, some presentation of safety to our citizens. I appreciate the statement that was made, uh, concerning violence toward our, uh, Asian and Pacific Islanders, brothers and sisters. Uh, I believe that's a step in the right direction, but let's just jump back, I guess, almost a year now uh, to past petition and progress moving forward. This is the objective of the Police Advisory Committee. Uh, the past, how did we get here or how we got here? Uh, George Floyd, Tamir Rice and Breonna Taylor. Somehow the death of African-American young men and women became a political issue instead of hate crimes. And as a city, um, particularly after I spoke with our mayor, uh, she assured me that would not be tolerated here. And after speaking with Chief Dan O'Neill and others, I started to develop some confidence that there was some help to make sure that what happened in other cities would not happen here. Then there was the Black Lives Matter rally here in Auburn, where the amount of anger, uh, distress and fear, uh, was far beyond what I expected it to be, seeing that there are so few African-Americans in our fair city. But the issues of hatred and violence uh, were leading to a generational divide, especially as we were coming up on an election year. Uh, it seemed that the younger people were, the more frustrated they were with the status quo, and something had to change. Uh, I, many, uh, men and women of the cloth were unwilling to go to the Black Lives Matters rally, but I figured we needed a few, uh, gray-haired individuals like myself to show up and be a voice of wisdom in the crowd, because this is not my first time dealing with, uh, dealing with prejudice or the fear of people that look like me just because we look like me. So as I showed up, I was pleasantly surprised to see the amount of diversity represented that could not stand the hate displayed to choke a man out on camera. Uh, proposal for productive meetings to avoid probable mayhem. Uh, our mayor called me into a meeting with, uh, herself, the deputy mayor, uh, members of council, the police chief and other administrators and leaders from our city. And before we took a picture, and God bless pictures, but, uh, as a tall black male preacher, I've been in a lot of pictures. And the picture was just a picture. It did not represent a thousand words. It generally represented, please, Pastor Lambert, stand here, we'll talk later, but we never talk. In that meeting, I felt like we made some real strides forward in understanding, whereas members of our community, we sat there and we did not want our city on fire. We did not want to have the demonstrations here that we had elsewhere, because those cities were willing to bury their head in the sand and hope that it went away. We were determined to have action, and my promise then remains till now, as long as we can talk together and come up with workable solutions. I will do everything I can to keep our people out of the street if we can make solutions in the boardroom. Uh, native dancers and the Civil Disturbance Unit out front, the Yakima Tribe, the Mukul Shute and the Pualap showed up to show solidarity with the Black Lives Matters movement. Uh, many, I've seen more native lives support Black Lives shirts than I've seen Black Lives Matter shirt in our city, because we know that if there is injustice anywhere, then it's gonna pack, impact everyone everywhere. And I remember walking up to City Hall where our Civil Disturbance Unit was prepared just in case something went left. And all I could see in my mind's eye was these young native dancers dancing in circles with rings in their hair and their beaded jewelry and our police force coming out as a backdrop. Auburn has many wonderful things to offer and many things that need to be seen, i.e. Mount Rainier being seen from downtown is beautiful. But I did not want my town known as the place that has black-clad men with shields standing behind young ladies with flowers in their hair. That is not what Auburn is. Our mayor and our police chief and the director of SWAT all agreed that we needed other solutions, but as we began to talk, I found that there was a widespread sense of fear and distrust in our city, and it wasn't just black and white. It was people of every corner having concerns about their safety, for their person, their property and their businesses. There was fear of what happens the next time needles are thrown in my yard and I respond, well, I go to jail for defending my property? And I've been told on a number of occasions, the answer is yes. So our citizens were in a place where they felt they had no recourse and they had no voice. Martin Luther King said that riot is the voice of the oppressed. Our desire in all the meetings that I was a part of was to avoid that, which leads us to the petition, what we, the people, ask. Now, our job is not to solve all of the problems. We will leave that to you amazing councilmembers and city officials. It was our job to talk to our various communities and see what the people desired. In the formation of the PAC, when we sat down to review applications, we went out of our way to find people that saw the world through different eyes, and I don't just mean eye color. Because having my skin does not mean you are qualified to represent my voice. We needed multiple perspectives. We needed men, we needed women, we needed ethnic diversity, racial diversity, gender diversity, and how you identified as far as sexual orientation, diversity across the board as far as we could foresee, and we, if we miss something, educate us. Our desire is to have everybody at the table. But the concerns were consistent. Number one was to be made safe, to be made safe in our persons, businesses and property by and from law enforcement. As we talked earlier, people wanted to hear men like Chief O'Neill say that what happened to George Floyd and the travesty that happened to Tamir Rice could not happen here. We would not tolerate it and not tolerate it like other cities did after the fact. Ahead of time, we would put in the training to make sure that as I raise four young black men in this city, they would be protected by our law enforcement and men like our chief would make sure that their training was in place to make sure that my sons were safe in that car. And we have a business, we have business representation that will speak in just a moment. I believe Mr. Ron Claudin has his end to speak on the impact of having your business not be safe. People spending their money in other towns because they're scared to go to our outlet collective because of aggressive panhandling. They are concerned about walking around downtown because of aggressive panhandling and crime, let alone the rapes that happen in the unincorporated parts of Auburn, because we have yet to come up with policing solutions that make sure that we stop crime. Second, King County being held responsible for not prosecuting crime. The committee, as we've read the papers and talked to officials from the city and law enforcement, finding out that things that the common citizen would see to be disastrous and monstrous are kicked down to a lower court and we will not prosecute them for whatever reason. And we are done with having, what, I don't even know what to call it. It would be mansplaining if we're in the workplace, but having public officials tell us why they can't do what they said they could do if our tax dollars were taken. So we're in a place where there's taxation apparently without representation, because we need to know that if someone is picked up for a crime, we are safe, or you're asking the citizens to handle it themselves. And if so, why do we need a thirty-four million dollar police budget if we have to protect our own selves? Thirdly, uh, implement humane solutions to homelessness and the crime associated with it. Though being homeless is not criminal, there are citizens or individuals that are homeless that are bringing about significant crime in our city. We desire our law enforcement officials to have the ability to keep people safe without treating our homeless brothers and sisters as they are less than human. We feel there is much room in between the two positions where we turn a blind eye or we send out the squads to harass. There's much middle ground. Chief O'Neill has offered many perspectives that I think were helpful. We spent several months being trained on our current situation. But the current, things being the way they are is not an excuse for them staying there. We must do something different. Now, this final quote, as we read through it, I just need you to hear my heart. And I'm, I'm trying to slide over the view. There we go. Time itself is neutral. It can be used either destructively or constructively. More and more, I feel that people of ill will have used time much more effective than have the people of goodwill. We will have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people. Human progress never rolls in on wheels of inevitability. It comes through the tireless efforts of men willing to work to be coworkers with God. And without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally of the forces of social stagnation. We must use time creatively in the knowledge that the time is always right, ripe to do right. And that's from Dr. King's Why We Can't Wait. My submission to you is that the things we brought to you are, first off, are only the first three things. There are many issues and concerns that are very significant. But this is our first attempt. And these three things we unanimously agreed on had to be addressed. And the addressing of these issues, our recommendation to council and our recommendation to the police force is that to address them does not mean to mention that you heard it, but to show significant progress to the people. We already have individuals in Auburn that are taking it upon themselves to arm themselves and harass our homeless brothers and sisters out of fear. I believe this will be stopped when we have legitimate solutions to the crime that they so greatly fear. And if it is possible and, uh, the, correct, I would love to yield time to Mr. Ron Claudin before we take questions, so he can present the impact as it's seen by our business community, as I'm trying to unshare the screen.
Well, thank you, Pastor Lambert. Um, as you can tell, he's an eloquent speaker and, uh, I enjoy, uh, going to the meetings. He's done a wonderful job along with uh, Chief O'Neill in bringing everybody together. I know that, uh, when I first decided or applied for this group, it was because I wanted to support our police and I was concerned there was a lot of people that weren't gonna be there to support the police. But as it turned out, uh, what we found is that their concerns are just like mine. We all love Auburn. We all want Auburn to be a better place. I have to admit in my, I was a little disappointed as, uh, Mayor Backus pointed out, uh, that I was selected as the, uh, the elder member of the, uh, group. I, um, but over the sixty years plus that I've been in Auburn, I, uh, it's interesting that this is, I think, my first time addressing the council and, uh, and here I am addressing you today on this, and then I think I sent everybody an email earlier this week too. So you've heard from me a couple times. But as, um, as I wanted to say though, is that, uh, the thing that everybody came together and we really wanted Auburn to be a place where, you could come to do business. And we see homelessness as a, a problem for business. When we have people sleeping in one of my cars or stealing, that's a concern. When we see safety as an issue, and, uh, Pastor Lambert talked about, um, widows in his church wanting, uh, to get a gun. We don't want to stop necessarily, like you pointed out, it's not whether you want guns or don't want guns. We want to stop people from wanting guns. Why do, we want that for our police. And then, of course, uh, having the ability for the county to, um, you know, support our police just like we do. Uh, as a business owner, again, I think it's important, you are looking to me for tax dollars every month, every, uh, collection, every car we sell. Um, and of course, I want to sell more cars, but I need more people to want to come to Auburn. And, uh, having a community, and I think Casey, uh, from the chamber had said it. She said, we ought to have, we ought to say that, um, we should be the best, uh, place, the safest city in King County and set that as a goal. And I know we've set goals before and, and said those things 'cause I, I'm out there. I'm one of those that, uh, is an Auburn nerd, and I like to talk about how great Auburn is and, and I did a great job. I have two of my children and, uh, and five of my grandchildren living here in Auburn, so. And, uh, I want it to, to be that way for all of us. So again, I think, uh, Chief O'Neill too for, uh, uh, working with Pastor Lambert and Commander Adams and bringing the group together. There's just really some great input. I've, I've really been impressed with that as well. So, uh, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to talk. And I don't know.
And we would love to field questions if there are any for us.
Hey, council, here's your opportunity. And, uh, first of all, Ron, thank you for that statement about Auburn being the greatest city in King County, but let's make Auburn the greatest city in the state of Washington.
There you go.
And, uh, take the, take the goals a bit higher than, uh, than that. So, Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, tha- thank you, Ron, and thank you, Pastor. Really, um, appreciate all the time and effort you put in and, um, certainly your, your, your passion and, you know, your, your pride in Auburn. Really appreciate that. Um, I, I was just wondering, as, um, as an advisory commission to the police, um, what sort of advice do you have for the police?
Well, our advice to the police directly was after we went through their, their steps in training was to have measurables. Like if we're gonna do racial diversity, uh, training and the taxpayers, I'm speaking on behalf of members of the chamber and everyone else, if we had X amount of African-American stops that involve force and we're taking training to reduce use of force, show the community how we've done that. If we're doing training on cultural sensitivity toward Native American citizens and we had X amount of force, uh, use or force complaints, then we need to have those measurables happen. But where we ran in, the reason that we had these three things we wanted to present before y'all that we've discussed with the uh, chief, was we're finding many of the challenges that scare our citizens and make people that look like me more dangerous will require the support of our city council moving forward. When people feel unsafe, going back to the gun issue, uh, historically, and I'm, I'm a southerner, so, uh, our statement was when people get scared, black people get shot. So our desire would be to do whatever it takes to make the city safer. Our recommendation to the police is make those things happen or scream loudly so we, the citizens, can demand it because there's too much fear. And seeing that we had a diverse group of people in the room and the answer on, whether it be from widows or veterans, uh, well, we just need to get guns to defend ourselves. Those are things that we wanted y'all to hear about. If the procedures that are on the books in principle are empowered, we feel we can make great progress toward racial reconciliation, ethnic racial, ethnic reconciliation, gender bias disappearing. But it's going to require not, and I asked Chief O'Neill, do we need to say we need more police? It's like, no. We just need support from all people, citizens, council and abroad to be able to enforce what is just common sense law enforcement. As a, uh, as, again, I, I can only speak for this, not for the committee, but as a black man, hearing the chief's heart to reduce the amount of law, the amount of officer-involved shootings, of which, in my opinion, there will always be too many because we want life preserved. But we agreed there. There's been very little disagreement between our law enforcement and the committee. Now, as far as practicalities, our recommendation to them is to keep pressing, but there's some things that they're gonna need your support for. As far as dealing with homelessness, people sleeping. As far as dealing with homelessness, people sleeping, today some homeless individual jumped on my hood. It took him a moment to figure out that is not where he wanted to be. These things have to stop in our city. That is why we're looking for humane solutions. And if those issues cannot be handled within the office of the police department, we would beg, plead, implore all of you to make sure that all the statutes of Auburn empower safety for everyone. Because on paper, we make the declaration, we want all African-American, all Asian-Americans, all pick your group to feel safe in Auburn. Reality is right now, we don't. And that's, I, for years, I took comfort believing that my white brothers and sisters did not have those same fears. I now know from the diversity in our group and having a best friend that's actually owns an arms company, that the fear is across the board. And our recommendation to the chief is let us know what we need to do. But that it's no longer a conversation between council and the police station. But in the papers, if there are decisions that are made that endanger our citizens, that we not look at it as an administrative issue. It's a public safety issue and the people need to be informed. We've asked that with the new public information officer, that very balanced information come from the police station. That it's not just this officer did a great job, but let us know where the challenges are, where those other issues arise. Those were the issues that we asked for directly to them. But the committee wanted to make sure that these issues, especially of people feeling safe in their person, their property and their businesses be heard, not just in a conversation with him, but in the conversation with all of us in our city leadership.
Pastor, thank you very much. And I want to thank the committee for taking a stance on imploring King County prosecution to do their job. It's an issue that I know the mayor and the council has discussed and taken up many times. It has a tendency to limit, if you will, the authority of the police and what they can do. And yes, we do have ordinances in place for taking some of those potential felonies and treating them as misdemeanors. But in my opinion, it's not the same impact. So we will continue to push hard in the King County prosecutorial effort to get them to do what needs to be done to help Auburn be the safest city in the state of Washington. Pastor Lambert, thank you so much for your leadership role in the committee. Ron and others who are participating in this committee. I know we look forward to some wonderful things with it. And I think Chief O'Neill for developing this, this vision to go forward and involving our citizens in the city of Auburn to help make this a better place. So with that, Mayor Bacchus.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to make you aware of a situation is not here in Auburn, but I just received urgent notification of an active shooter seen in Boulder, Colorado, where several have been killed, including a police officer. Let us please keep them all in our thoughts and prayers and work to ensure that those types of things do not happen here in our city. And the PAC, the members of the PAC are doing a great job of getting to know one another, trusting one another to ensure that they feel safe and that they are in a safe and gracious space in order to share their concerns, their plights, their goals and how we can listen to them moving forward to ensure that everyone in our city does feel safe.
Mayor, before we move on, Casey Bray is here. She's also part of the police advisory committee. There is some confusion with how she was logged in. She came up under Auburn Area Connect. She also had a few words if we could allow her to share those before we move on to our next.
Absolutely. Casey, I see your hand raised, so please go ahead.
Thank you Council. Thank you Chief O'Neill. Thank you to Pastor Lambert and also to Ron and speaking on behalf of the PAC. I just, I, I'm just really grateful that we have the support of the mayor and council for the PAC. I think that it is such an important aspect of making sure that we have a safe community for everyone, including our businesses, our, every resident that lives here, people that visit, our tourists. And I also want to really emphasize the fact that it needs to be safe for our police officers. I got to on Friday, go to training with our police officers all day. So they got to spend time with me from 7:30 to like 5:30 in the afternoon. And one thing that really impacted me is that we're sending our police officers out there day in and day out to provide safety for all of us. But they also wonder every day if they're going to be safe because of what they're up against in their community. I couldn't imagine going to work every day with the thought process that they have to. I also am so saddened to hear from our business community what they do every day going to their jobs with the fear that they have in their mind. I know that if it's so relevant in our business community from whether or not they are going to have people shooting up drugs and they're going to have to say something, or that they are going to be bombarded by somebody who is homeless parking their RV out in front of their store and they're going to be pushed by them, or they're going to have them in their bathrooms and they can do nothing about it. These are fearful situations. We lock our doors at the chamber currently right now because we have people come in and they're abrasive. And I have tenants that rent space from me and that is the only way that I can make sure that I am protecting them. And we're right by the police department. You would think that we would be in a little bit of a, people would be concerned. But unfortunately, I feel like from what I have spoken to police officers, to people in the community, that the police hands are tied when it comes to making sure that they can really provide and get the people that need the resources that might have mental health issues or people that are continuous offenders off the streets. And I think that at this point, I'm really going to look to city council. I mean, I know that you guys probably got the letter. I'm hoping that you all read it from Java Junction. When, you know, at 4:00 AM, one of his baristas have to walk into somebody who is unfortunately dead and she is parked in their brain matter. Or people are coming in and shooting up in the bathroom so their employees can't actually even use their own restroom. I, I will say this, that it's a, it's a community thing. It affects everyone. It affects our businesses, but our businesses are going to end up not being profitable if they keep getting stuff stolen. They're not going to be profitable if they can't keep employees and they're going to leave Auburn. I don't want to see that happen. I know that our council doesn't want to see that happen. So I, I really ask of you guys to think of this as what would you do if it was your child? You, would you let them live in your home, shoot up drugs, harm you, steal from you? And say, well, my hands are tied. We can't do anything. We, we don't want to be mean. We need to provide safety. And I know that you would want to provide, provide safety for your own homes. Well, the city council has been elected to be the leaders of our home of Auburn. And so I just ask of you, when we're talking about these things, to say, yes, we need to look at King County, but look at what we can do as a city council to be able to provide our police department, our businesses, our community members with the safety that they need so that we can have the safest Auburn. The safest, if you want to say it, the safest Auburn in the county, the safest Auburn in the state. I don't care. Like our city should be a safe place to live and do business. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at deficits in our city funding because businesses are going to leave. And that general fund provides directly to our police department to, to provide safety. So we really need to look at how we are operating as an overall city to make sure that we are safe. And I know that we had Blue Ribbon Committee where it was the healthiest city in Washington. Well, we need to do something to make it the safest city in Washington. And it's going to be on us. It's not going to necessarily, King County, the state, they're not going to make that happen. We're going to have to make that happen and we have to figure out how to do that. Thank you so much and thank you again so much for supporting the PAC. We have a great group of people. I am so happy to be a part of it. And I just, I want to thank our mayor for just having, she's done such a great job in the sense of having awesome police department. We have a great chief. He has done a fabulous job and we just need to support our police department and now our community to make sure that we're all safe. Thank you.
Thank you Casey very much. And, and yes, we are your elected officials. We are the ones who represent the people in Auburn. And we have taken some stances on issues. And we do support our police department. And can we do more? Always can we do more? I said this during our recent town hall, that defunding the police is not an option in Auburn. The support we need to provide with our officers. And as you mentioned Casey, the job they do every day, putting that badge on, going out in the streets, not knowing what the day is going to bring them. We, we, we have a true compassion for that. Chief O'Neill has done an excellent job. He's been a forward progressive thinker in relation to moving this department forward. And he constantly briefs council what's happening in our city, including crime statistics. We get regular briefings, we get regular emails showing all that. And we together can do more. The PAC is such a tremendous asset now to the city. And the council, as we go forward, can always have more discussions of what we need to do and how we need to do it and take the decisive action we need to take. Again, with the King County prosecution efforts, the recent decision by the Washington State Supreme Court that gives the criminalization of possession of use of narcotics takes our police department another notch below of what they're allowed to do in keeping the city safe. The city councils can take other action as well. And as we go forward, we will look at those other actions we can take to provide more support and continued support to our police and to the chief to make sure every day when they do their jobs, that only do they have the support of the council, they have the resources and tools they need to do, excuse me, to do that job. Chief O'Neill, any other comments, statements from you, please?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I think the members of the PAC have come together as a group and a team and they've identified a common goal. And their common goals are to, you know, keep our businesses safe, compassionately deal with homeless individuals, hold them accountable and they commit crimes that provide compassionate alternatives for those who want to get help and get into treatment and get out of that lifestyle. And together we have learned to work to come up with initiatives to try and improve safe interactions between our officers and our citizens and our community. And I think majority of our community was not aware of the fact that it's not council, it's not the mayor, it's not the police that are responsible for the increasing crime trends in our city and our community. Those are things that influence us outside of our city. And that's where we need to focus our attention so that we can bring accountability to those that want to harm our businesses and the citizens that live within Auburn. And so until we can work together and come up with reasonable solutions to overcome the obstacles that are presented at the county level, that, that's where the real challenge is going to lie for us. And that's where we need to get creative. The filing and decision standards that we have to work under only push violent crimes down to our district court and crimes that should be charged as felonies. You know, pushes them into our district court so that they're overloaded and clogged and unable to effectively prosecute minor thefts and vandalisms that affect businesses like Ron Clauden and others in our city. And so I think that's where our work needs to come in. And I'm grateful that the members of our PAC and the members of our community see that council or the mayor or the police aren't to blame for that. This is a problem and a issue that we all need to work together on to come up with a solution for.
Right, absolutely. You know, the, the case backlog in the, in the courts is just staggering. You know, since the pandemic hit and court shut down and went virtual is just, it's astonishing to see the number of cases that will take. Who knows however, to get them back on the books of the courts to do the prosecution and to do the things need to be done. But until that time, as I said, your city council will look at actions we need to take and make sure that we're doing the appropriate actions to give the police the tools, resources, the support they need. And also to support the PAC and of course, everybody else in Auburn as well. So we are dedicated to do that. And council, any other comments or statements or questions from you? Councilmember Trump Andrew.
I'd just like to make a comment. I want to thank the PAC for coming and presenting to us. I remember bringing this topic to our council about having a citizen advisory board and I'm glad that we finally got one. I look forward to hearing more about what you're recommending for us to do. And I've gone on a ride along with our police officer within not even an hour. We had three calls and one had to do with the homeless, homeless person and the other one were two drug busts. And so I see how hard our police and what they have to go through. And it was just an eye opening. I've also gone to the encampment and I've seen how these homeless people are living. And it just really opened up my mind, my eyes on how much we have to do. We have a lot of work ahead of us. And so I just thank you three for coming and speaking up and speaking to us and looking forward to working with you.
And council, any other comments or questions? All right. Ron, Pastor Lambert, Lambert, Casey, and of course, Chief O'Neill. Thank you very, very much for the presentation. We look forward to hearing you again as we go forward and we see some of the accomplishments that are taking place and some of the concerns that may be continuing. I look forward to future presentations. So thank you again for your, your work and thank you again for your presentation this evening, everybody. All right, council. We will now move into our next topic, which is a presentation by the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center with Director Tate. And we have a guest this evening, the director, executive director of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, Mary Ellen Stone. Director Tate.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening Deputy Mayor, City Council, Mayor. So I'll be real quick here, just orient city council to page 12 of the packet. Page 12 is the agenda bill. So you might want to just skip right past that and go to page 13, which is the presentation. So this evening, as Deputy Mayor indicated, Mary Ellen Stone is joining us. She's the executive director of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center or KASARC. KASARC is a nonprofit agency that provides services in King County. And they provide support to victims and families of sexual assault, advocacy for victims, treatment and policy advocacy throughout the region as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen's going to share her screen in a moment and walk us through her presentation. Thank you. Mary Ellen, I think you're on mute or we can't hear you. We cannot hear you. We can see you talking, but we can't hear you.
I wonder if maybe you have, do you have an a headpiece and earpiece in, Mary Ellen? If you do, your speakers may need to be changed on your. On Zoom for you.
Yes. Hey, Mary Ellen, down in the lower left, there should be where your camera can turn on. You should have an option to connect your audio. Okay, so now you're going to want to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Are you connected to two different speakers or do you, is your phone on as well as your? So if you if you hang up on your phone and you are just on your computer screen, that should eliminate the echo.
Okay, does that help?
Okay, does that help? Councilmembers, thank you for your patience. I believe that Mary Ellen probably. Exited out of. Of the app for all of her devices and will be coming back in. And as soon as she does, Danica will. Will promote her to presenter or panelist.
Would it make sense to move to the next agenda item and then come back?
I was just thinking this, I was just thinking the same thing. So to give Mary Ellen some time to. Reconnect. Perhaps we can go ahead and do that. So let's go ahead and move on to item 3C. Which is the update from the junior city council. And turn it over to Director Hinman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decorsi, and hello, council and mayor and. Guests to our amazing city council meeting today, our study session. And good thing I have some young, young folks here who are ready at a moment's notice. To be. Moved up into the onto the agenda, so I will turn it over to. Our Auburn Junior City Council Chairperson Wayland Menzio and our Vice Chair Jonathan Malanga. For their quarterly report on the activities of the Auburn Junior City Council.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to get my screen presented here if it will let me. Sorry. Oh, I really don't like that the Zoom bar goes right to the top. Sorry. Even technology is not my friend sometimes. Can everyone see this?
Yes, in case you're not able to see any of us now that you're sharing your screen.
I can. Oh, maybe if I do that, I'm sorry. So thank you, everyone, for letting us be here tonight. We're here to myself and Vice Chair Malanga are here to give you a presentation on what we have been doing with the Auburn Junior City Council. So with membership and recruitment. The Auburn Junior City Council is actively recruiting new members. So myself. Counsel, junior council member Sin and junior council member Taylor have been working on different items, including. An email to go out to schools that we do not have represented on the council yet. Letters. To different organizations to find more young members to be part of our junior city council. And we recently recorded a short video in help in hopes to help aid our recruitment process. I believe. I got an email earlier today saying the city has our video to play, or should I present that?
We do have the video to share.
Okay, I'll stop presenting for right now so that we can share the recruitment video. Hi, everyone. My name is Wayland Menzio, and I'm a sophomore at Auburn Mountain View High School. Currently, I'm serving as the Chair of the Auburn Junior City Council. I joined the junior council two years ago because I found a passion in public service while serving on my school's ASB. I really enjoy being there for my community, being out there for my community, helping make change for those who most need it. This was the perfect opportunity to get involved. This change I've made personally, while on the junior city council, like within myself, is becoming a stronger leader and a better person. Overall, and some of the more policy changes I've helped make, I've lobbied for the youth of Auburn. Continuously with city council, the mayor, and even state legislators down in Olympia. So I really want to be there for you, and I really hope you consider joining us. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, I'm Jonathan, and I'm a high school sophomore. I joined the Auburn Junior City Council to be a steward. Being a steward means to be a caretaker for a community. And the Auburn Junior City Council has given me the opportunity to do that by allowing me to support the youth with issues that are important to us.
Hi, I'm Janine Park, and I'm a sophomore at Auburn Riverside High School. I joined the junior city council because I wanted to make a positive difference in the community and learn about how the city operates.
Thank you. That video was quick. We did plan to have other members, but some events came up in their lives and they weren't able to record in time. But we will have more videos to come, and we're super excited about that. Now I'm just going to share my screen again. So our goal is to fill every seat on the Auburn Junior City Council and get more middle school representation. Because right now we don't have any, and that we really want to represent our community equally. Now I will turn it over to Vice Chair Jonathan Malanga to talk about the youth town hall.
Hi, council members and Mayor Backus. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I'm Jonathan Malanga, Vice Chair of the Auburn Junior City Council. And we'll be working with the mayor to host a town hall. The town hall should be on youth advocacy, and we're still ironing out the details, but we do plan it. We're planning for it to be held on April 8 at 6:30 PM. And we hope everyone can come. Thank you.
The update was short, but I can tell you that we have all been working very hard on these different items. We meet every other week on Thursdays. So I believe it's the second and fourth Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM. And we also meet with our subcommittees. As often as we can to discuss our items. So a lot of good things are happening, and we really thank you for letting us be here.
Council member Trump manual.
Yes, hi. Thank you for such a great report. I was wondering, how many members do you have now on the? Junior City Council?
We have seven members, and there is space for nine members and nine alternate members.
And they're from what? High school, middle school?
Yes, you can be a member from middle school to high school, and currently we have members from Auburn Riverside and Auburn Mountain View High School.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Wayland, thank you, John. I mean, you guys are doing such amazing work, and I'm just really inspired by. You know, you know, you guys are just great leaders and, you know, thank God you live in Auburn. We're just so blessed to have you here. I had just a quick question, which was, I think we made some changes to the rules, I think, about how you recruit people. Or how people get on to the junior council last December, maybe, I think it was to make it a little bit easier, maybe a little bit more diverse. Have you noticed? Have they been helpful?
We have gained one more member since we did update the recruitment process, and I believe there has been interest. From some other members. So I think the process is working that we updated.
Great. That's great to hear.
Other questions, counsel? Well, I have to tell you, I look forward to the junior city council meetings and councilmembers turns your right. Amazed that the leadership qualities that are shown by these young men and young women. It's a real testimony to who they are. What they're doing in their school careers. And what they represent. And going forward, I think you're looking at probably some future duties, future city council members. Perhaps some future state legislators, perhaps some future US senators and representatives, you never know. So they are just a joy to be with and very thoughtful in what they do and very detailed. In conducting their meetings. So Wayland and Jonathan, again, thank you. And the rest of the members of the junior city council for the tremendous work you're doing. And for supporting the efforts of the youth in our city, which is extremely important. So Dana, any other comments from you?
No, just do agree with everything that you said, and I hope they continue to to build their leadership skills and and. And lead in positive ways like they already have.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you both again. Good job. Okay, Director Tate, can we come back on, please?
Yeah, I'm emailing Mary Ellen on the side here, and she hasn't been able to get back into the meeting yet, so. My only suggestion is to keep moving forward and. We'll keep trying on the backside. IT has been very gracious in reaching out, and so is our human services staff to see if they can help her. So we'll see what we can do.
Very good. Okay, so counsel, let's move on to our next topic. Which is ordinance number 6814 with Director Thomas.
Good evening, council. Hopefully, we don't scare Mary Ellen away with our BNO presentation this evening. We do want her to come back. But with that, I'm going to jump into my presentation for. Tonight's presentation. On the BNO tax review. So. A few weeks ago, we had met to. Go over the draft BNO tax code and some of the key elements of it. I received a lot of really good feedback from the council. I've incorporated some of your thoughts and your considerations. I've also brought back some more. Information that you have requested from me. Before we jump into those items, I thought I would start with a summary of the proposal that I brought last month. So the recommendation was to have a BNO tax with a $500,000 reporting threshold. We would have variable rates by industry. At the end of the meeting, we had talked with council, it seems pretty unanimous that we wanted to keep those variable rates. Which ranged from half of 1% for retail up to 0.18% for wholesaling activities, and then the other sectors. Fell in the middle between somewhere between 0.1% and 0.15%. And then we also had proposed a 10 cent per square foot tax on warehousing and wholesaling activities. So between those two taxes, the BNO would generate $3.94 million estimated. And the square foot tax would generate $1.35 million in square foot tax estimated for a total of $5.29 million. So at the end of that presentation, I had some discussion points that I had asked of council. I received some feedback. So this is a summary of the feedback that I had asked from council. The feedback that I had received and then some other things that have come up along the way, and you will see those reflected in the most current. Draft of the BNO code. Which still actually has some outstanding pieces because I'm not entirely sure which direction we want to go yet, so I just left some placeholders. In the code as you have it so far. So when asking about the proposed rates, did we want to do the variable rates or the uniform rates? I heard pretty overwhelmingly that we wanted to do the over, do the uniform rate or not to do the uniform rates. That that we wanted the variable rates in order to help businesses that have smaller profit margins. Should we be considering a tax cap? I heard from several council members, you said no. Should we adjust the square foot tax rate or expand to other business types? I didn't really get much feedback. I did hear. One council member would like to see maybe some scenarios with an increased rate for that square footage tax, so I've prepared some scenarios for that. For your consideration this evening. I didn't hear any other. Discussion points on tax credit on the existing tax credits as I had proposed, which were the new employee or the new employer tax credit for the employees that they bring into the city. As well as a tax credit for the businesses that are paying a business improvement assessment every year in the downtown area. I did get some feedback from both councilmembers Sterns and Jay Raj about potentially offering credits for disadvantaged. For businesses that hire disadvantaged employees or those that have faced barriers in employment in the past. Which I think goes really well with our DEIA work that we're doing currently in the city. And then also, what can we do to give credits and consideration to businesses that are investing into the beautification of their business fronts, their storefronts, and facade improvements as well? No other feedback from council as far as deductions and exemptions go. However, there were some other discussion points that came up along either through our presentation that night and from even. Some business from some businesses that I think we've all heard from over the last several weeks that I figured that we should touch base and kind of dive a little bit deeper into some of those discussions this evening. And one of those is Deputy Mayor Decorsi had asked to see some data on what the reporting threshold and the impacts on revenue would be if we increased our threshold. From $500,000 to $750,000. We had received some feedback on the implications for commissions for real estate brokers that on their commissions. And how those commissions are currently reported and taxed. And then, so I have proposed some some deduction deduction in our tax code language to address some of those concerns. And then also discussing the tax cap again. Particularly, I think we've all heard quite a bit from the auto dealers and really how this proposed tax hurt is hurtful to their bottom line, and I really think that that. Extends to a lot of businesses that operate with slimmer profit margins. So maybe just discussing the tax cap a little bit further to see what we can do to potentially help those businesses. So first point I'm going to jump into is the thresholds and what does the data look like if we. If we increase the threshold from 500,000 to 750,000 dollars? And I want to caveat this discussion with, I don't have data from the DOR, from the Department of Revenue for the number of businesses and the revenue amounts for businesses over 500,000 dollars. So I had to do some extrapolation and some trending to determine what, how many businesses we'd likely lose between the 500,000 and the 750,000 dollar tax cap and what that tax, that tax revenue implication would be. So again, heavily caveated, again, a lot of this is based on estimates, based on really large tax revenue information that we've received from the State Department of Revenue. But then there is even another layer of my trend analysis to kind of dive even deeper into a $750,000 tax cap versus the $500,000 tax cap. So with that, I estimate that we actually lose about half of the businesses if we increase the tax cap again from 500,000 to 750,000. At the $500,000 threshold, we would have about 991 businesses that look like would qualify and be reporting a BNO tax return. If we bumped that up to 750,000, we could really narrow the number of businesses reporting down to about 465 businesses. You can see in total that that's a lost revenue of about $500,000 based on our estimates and based on the average revenue base in those businesses between the 465 businesses and the 991 businesses. What I would recommend is if council would like to consider a higher tax cap of $750,000, that would be fine. I would just want to make sure that we are making up and accounting for that extra $500,000 lost revenue somewhere. And if we increase the proposed retail rate from 0.05% to 0.065%, that is actually almost exactly $500,000. So it would, it could even out. Then it would be fewer businesses reporting. It would put a slightly bigger impact on those, on that retail sector in order to make up the difference. So now for more information on the square footage tax, I'm in wanting some more information. There was really two requests that I had on this, which was what does the square foot tax look like if we increased it from 10 cents per square foot to 12 and a half cents per square foot? And the impact you can see on the very top here is it would generate about an additional $338,000 in tax revenue for the city. And my caveat, the one thing that I would caution though, is that, that kind of that blended tax rate for wholesaling would go from 0.09% to 0.11%. And when I say the blended average tax rate, I'm considering the BNO tax they would, they would be on the hook for as well as the square foot fee. And if we're trying to even out the tax burden to all businesses as equally as possible, I think we start kind of skewing a stronger burden onto that warehousing and wholesaling sector. And the average tax rate that we're proposing right now for all the other businesses is right around 0.08%. So if we leave the square foot fee at 10 cents per square foot, it keeps the wholesaling and warehousing sectors at 0.09% so that all the businesses are kind, that are reporting and paying, are paying a really similar average tax rate between all of them. So that being said, I don't know if there's an argument that council feels strongly about that, that the wholesaling and warehousing sector has maybe a, has a stronger or more expensive draw on city resources when it comes to road infrastructure. But actually quantify that would require a lot more analysis. I couldn't tell you off the top how much more that sector actually costs the city and the general fund services that we currently provide. There was a, the second request on the square foot tax was how much warehouse space do we have in the city? And how many businesses would be impacted by this particular tax? And again, my answer is I wish I had better information. Our community development department does retain some information based on the types of business spaces that we have in the city and an estimated square foot fee for, or a square footage space that those businesses use. I can tell you, I've been through a lot of that data over and over. I don't think it's necessarily complete data. So because it's not required information that we require businesses to fill out when they, when they file for and renew their business licenses, it's, it's not necessarily 100% accurate. So the auditor in me would say, I'm not sure how complete that this data is, but based on the information that I do have, we have 3.4 million square feet of warehousing space in Auburn with the data that I have. So my numbers and calculating the taxes based on that 3.4 million dollar square feet figure. The way that the tax code is currently written would apply the square foot fee to space greater than 4,000 feet. So the estimated number of businesses impacted with the data that I have would be about 75 businesses. And you can see the breakdown at the bottom there, how many businesses fall into each of those categories, with most businesses falling in the 10,000 to 30,000 range. And if you look at the, at the the grid above, that would put them at 10 cents per square feet, somewhere between 20 and 20,000 dollars in a square foot fee tax per year. So that is where most of those 75 businesses, where most of those, those businesses would fall. And then of course, the second largest category is actually the 5 to 10,000 square feet. So they're falling on more the shorter, smaller end of maybe the $2,000 per year in the square foot tax. So moving on to the deductions that I added, and this comes from the real estate commission. These were some of the real estate commission concerns that we had received. There, and I apologize, last week in your original packet, the original version of the BNO tax code got added to your council packet. So Teresa was kind enough to send out an updated link this morning to the updated code. So if you're looking at the updated code that you received today, it's on page 40. I also believe that's page 60, the overall page 66 of your council packet that you have right now. I'm gonna try my best to explain what the concern is with the, with the real estate, with the real estate community. And that is that the way that commission is reported currently, the brokerage office or the firm that has many brokers working for them currently report and pay BNO tax to the state in an aggregate. So of all the commission earned from all the, all the brokers of the firm, they are taxed and the firm pays that tax to the, to the state. So in essence, those brokers then are paying BNO tax on their portion of the commission, even though the firm that they are working for is doing it on their behalf. Not all those brokers and likely most of those brokers aren't necessarily earning $500,000 a year in commission. And so the concern is they're not able to take advantage of that $500,000 or the $750,000 a year threshold that we're proposing and that they're getting overtaxed. So there is a deduction and this is kind of mirroring, mirroring what some other cities have done, which is that the brokerage office would be required to pay BNO tax on their portion of commissions, provided they hit the $500,000 threshold annually. But the commission that the agents, each of the agents working for that office, the portion, the portion of the commission due to them is not taxable. So in that, I'm hoping that that alleviates some of the concerns of the real estate community, but two, that this is mirroring what other cities are doing. So it really helps with consistency. Even though we do have that flexibility that we've talked a lot about, we can do things the way we want to do them. We want to be really careful that we, we don't do things too drastically different. And if some other cities have found ways to write in deductions and exemptions, if they fit our, meet our needs, we would like to kind of piggyback on the, on the boilerplate that they've already created. And so that's where, where I've included this deduction into our code. So on the tax credit piece, this part was a little bit trickier. These can be really complex. I think that while all three of the recommendations, both with providing incentives for businesses that align with our DEI efforts and in their employment choices, as well as rewarding or incentivizing businesses to invest in capital improvements and beautification, I think that they require a lot more thought in how, and how we're going to build these out. And I don't think that particularly with the DEI, I would like this to be more of a task force effort to really kind of drill down and what, what groups are we really trying to target and what are we really trying to incentivize? And making sure that I'm not making these tax credit decisions in a vacuum and that I have a team of people that are really helping target, really getting at what it is that we're trying to incentivize. The federal IRS actually has a lot of incentives for something very similar for providing incentives for employers that hire employees that have traditionally been economically disadvantaged. That's most of what their, their, their tax credit programs center around. So whether it's employees that have been historically on social security benefits or unemployment benefits, it really creates an incentive, an incentive system for businesses to get credits for hiring those employees. It's a very administratively intensive process because there is a lot of paperwork to really support those credits. I don't want to sound discouraging. I think that this is something we absolutely could do, but again, I think that it requires more, more of an effort and more thoughtful, more of a thoughtful process and more people involved. And I would like to explore that as we go down the road and not necessarily in this first round of the, of the BNO. When it comes to capital improvements and beautification, I think that there's a fine line between what's considered a capital, what's considered a capital improvement and beautification. We already do have facade improvement grants that we make available to businesses where they have an opportunity to get matching grants to do facade improvements to their property. And I'm hoping that we can incentivize businesses to invest into their property through that program, more so than on the heels of a BNO tax. Mostly because it's very expensive. I've talked to the company that we will be engaging in to help us build our reporting, our reporting system for BNO tax. But it is for each, for each tax credit, it's so customized to the, to the city that wants to implement the tax credit. And most cities don't have tax credits. It can cost, and this is just an estimate, it's not, it's not a final number, but their estimate is between 30 and 40,000 dollars to build the special programming for each credit. So if we're going to be spending that kind of money to get the tax code written and have the tax credit available, I want to make sure that it's really meaningful from the get-go and that it's really targeting what we're trying to target. So that's why my recommendation would be to hold off right now with the reminder that our tax code can be amended at any point. We can amend it once the council has adopted it. So if the council adopts in April, we can amend in May, we can amend in June, we can amend next year. So there, this isn't, this can be a living, breathing tax code, tax code. It doesn't have to stay like this forever. Which brings me now to tax caps. This again is on page 24 of the tax code and I believe page 50 of the council agenda packets. And I have a placeholder for the tax cap. I changed the, the language a little bit to cap the tax liability for retail only. I think that's where we've heard a lot of, most of our concern was over the retail industry. I have a million dollars in a tax cap that's currently plugged in. I want to express that I understand that that is an unrealistic number. There probably no businesses in Auburn that would actually ever reach a $1 million tax bill for the year. It was, it's just a placeholder for now. So for an example, the chart on the right is actually kind of an example of with different tax caps, what would the, what amount of revenue then would be essentially exempt from being taxed if we have a tax cap in. So an example would be if we had a tax cap of $50,000. So a business would be capped at not being required to pay more than $50,000 a year in BNO tax. That would, that would be all of the revenue that they generate over 100 million would be tax exempt. And the reason why that seems like such a big number is because the tax rate for retail is just so low at half of 1%. So they, that's why I also put in the business impact table again. I shared this with you last time. So you can get an idea of really what the, the tax impact is for different revenue for a business. If you go all the way to the furthest right column of that chart, a business with $20 million in taxable revenue at the half of 1% would be, have a tax liability of $10,000 a year. So we still have, we still have, we can still have the conversation about whether we want to have a tax cap. How much is that tax cap going to be? If we do want to do it, do we want to have it just for retail or is this something that we want, would, would we want to roll out for other, other industries, particularly because retail is already paying such a smaller, when I talk about that average blended rate, they already are only paying point, or only half of 1% compared to the rate of other, other industries. And again, historically, it's because they have lower profit margins. So it would seem that that would be more fair on average. So that is my, all of my follow-up information that I'm sharing with you. So I really need a few more follow-up feedback from the group, which is, do we want to increase the threshold from 500 to 750,000? Even if that means a slightly increased rate for retail. Do we want to do anything with the square foot tax? Do we want to keep it at 10 cents per square foot? Do we want to increase it to maybe 12 and a half cents per square foot? And are you okay with holding off on the tax credits for now? If we continue to work on how we can put together some meaningful tax credits in the future? And do we want to still be considering a tax cap? So with that, I'm gonna stop talking and ask for hopefully some good conversation.
So council, comments, questions for Jamie? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Wow, that's pretty dense. Thank you Jamie, really comprehensive. So I think the question I had about going from 500 to 750 would be increasing the retail rate. Would, I guess I just needed a better sense of who that would, you know, burden more. What kind of businesses would, you know, are in that smaller group left?
It, it's kind of, it's a difficult question to answer it because in total, there's always, there, we just have so much, so many more retail businesses in general. So the, the number of businesses that I guess get sheltered from a tax, as we continue to increase that cap, it looks like retail in general kind of is the winner every time we increase the tax cap a little bit more, just because there's more businesses that fall into that category. With a $750,000 tax cap, just I can rattle off the, the, the number of businesses that still continue to fall into that would be still reporting. An estimated 235 of those businesses would be retail, 183 of them would be wholesale, seven would be in the services sector and 41 of them in manufacturing. Again, these are estimates just based on, and I couldn't, I don't have, DOR won't share with me which businesses they are. So I, I don't have any idea until businesses actually start reporting which businesses these are.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, you know, we're, we're, you know, being asked to look at policy and we're and we're operating to some degree with a pretty large blind spot.
Other questions, council? Okay, Jamie, for myself, thank you for presenting this this evening. Quite honestly, I'm not prepared to give any effective feedback tonight. I need time to digest this and review it. And perhaps I would ask council to do the same and to, if they need to, to prepare some statements or some questions and send those out to Antoinette, we could forward to you. And then address those further. I think we need, in my opinion, we need some more time to kind of go back through this again. I know you see here, we have, you've set up an April 12 study session for the final code and ordinance review. And then going forward to council on April 19th for potential adoption of the ordinance. So I'm glad you put that timeframe in there, but I really would like time to really review this in detail and depth overall and to take a, I might say, a harder look at it as we go forward. I will say that I still have concerns related to the feedback we've received from our business community. And I want to put that into consideration as well as I go forward and review the proposed ordinance with that. So council, any other comments from each of you?
I have my hands up.
Okay, I see it now. I don't have the full screen, so but go ahead.
I also feel the same as you, Deputy Mayor Decourcy. I'm sitting here with my hands on my temple because that was a lot to take in. And I really need to sit down and really, like you said, digest this again. And having those emails and calls that we're receiving from the businesses, I as well have a little bit of concerns, but I want to make sure that I am clear of what we're going to ask and understand everything that's being presented to us. So I do feel that we need a little bit more time and maybe a phone call with me and the finance director to go over some of these questions that I may have.
And Jamie, it would be helpful for what you presented tonight, if you could forward your slides on to council.
Yes.
It gives us a little better perspective as we're going forward with this.
And I had suspected that there was still some more. After I presented kind of the additional data for council to consider, I was expecting you would want a little bit more time to absorb this, absorb some of the comments that we've been receiving from the business community, which is why I was thinking that pushing another study session out to April, having another study session at April 12, just to kind of go over our final thoughts on the code would be better than trying to push it through any sooner. I don't want there to be any perception that we're just pushing this through and that we haven't considered every aspect or every comment that we've received from the business community. And I would be, of course, more than happy to answer any questions from either the council has or the business community has. But just also, I want to remind the council that we have adopted a 2122 budget, assuming we have an additional $6 million in BNO tax. So we would be looking at making budget cuts of $6 million for 2022 if we did not move forward with a BNO tax in effect for January 1, 2022.
Okay, thank you for that. And again, thank you for giving us the time as you described. So that's very helpful for us to, this is such an intense process we're going through here. So I really appreciate you covering us, the amount of time we need to take to go through this very thoughtfully. Council member Baggett, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I appreciate your comments and those of council member Trout Manuel. This is a very, very important thing for, not only for the city, but also for the businesses here. And we have to be real careful and considerate and maybe a little compassionate here about making decisions on this. And I think that, like you said, I think we're going to need the additional time to really evaluate this and what effect and impact it will have on our businesses, both small and large. And I really, it's critical, we need to make that decision, but we also have to consider the revenue side. And it's going to be very important that this role, the role this will play in our forecasting and our budgeting process as Jamie indicated. So I appreciate everybody's comments and let's look forward to digesting this a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Agreed. Any other comments or questions, council, for Jamie? Okay, oh, there we go, back to the regular screen, August everybody. So Jamie, once again, thank you for all your hard work on this. And we look forward to continuing our conversations. And council, again, if you have comments, suggestions, line item concerns within the ordinance itself, please go ahead and prepare what those are. Send those to Antoinette, who will then forward them on to Jamie, and then Jamie will be able to respond back to us. So thank you again, Jamie, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy, Mary Ellen Stone is back with us and ready to present if you will allow her to.
If we could, I have 7:06. I would like to take a short recess before we get to Mary Ellen's report, Mary Ellen, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely. You're working hard. Take a break. Yes.
Thank you. So council, it's 7:06. Let's come back around 7:14. I will give you an odd number tonight, so you'll have eight minutes. And let's make sure we're all back on or before that time so we can reconvene the meeting. So we are recessed until 7:14. Thank you. All right, council, we will reconvene, call the meeting back to order. And at this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mary Ellen Stone.
Okay, council members, thank you for your patience. And I want to say kudos to Danica for her excellent tech support getting me through my Zoom crisis today. So thank you so much. And thanks for working me in. It sounds like you've had a long meeting. I came in earlier and was very interested to hear the report from the PAC. That was helpful. So I'm glad that I got that. So what I want to do, and Jeff, I'm going to just put my slides up, right? We've sort of choreographed this. So let me, hopefully you can see my slides. Hang on one minute. Here we go. Um, K-SARC has been working for Auburn residents for over 40 years. And I had a helpful conversation with Amer Bakas and Jeff Tate, maybe a month or so ago, and sort of talked about the services we're providing. And I will say, I came in with this, the conversation saying, I'm concerned that for the first time in 40 some years, we had not been funded for providing services in 2021, 22. So we had a good conversation. And one of the things that I realized is that we, as K-SARC, should be talking with you more about here's what's going on in the services that we're providing. So I want to walk through some slides with you, give you a snapshot, tell you where some of our key partnerships are, tell you what we're doing for the city residents of Auburn. If the Zoom guys are with me, I have a short two-minute video I want to share to just sort of underscore how our services change people's lives. And then ask your help in terms of, you know, how we want to provide services to Auburn residents. We've been doing it in the pandemic. And sort of how the intersection of all the issues that we are supporting in Auburn, and I hear you with housing and homelessness and mental health, how those also have an impact on sexual assault. So it's been 40-plus years for serving Auburn residents. These slides look remarkably slimmer and if I were in your shoes, I would say this is a good sign. We are seeing a lot of people from Auburn. Auburn is one of the higher use services, or cities, rather. I think this is a good thing because we know sexual assault is very, very, very underreported. So if you look at 2018, we responded to 248 victims from Auburn, the majority of whom, well, 40% were over 18, so 60% children and teens. Seeing about the same percentages in 2019, a little fewer adults are 18 and over, but still, so a lot of children and teens ate almost, you know, 1,800, almost 1,900 hours of service. In 2020, things look a little different. We saw, we responded to fewer people. There, I mean, I don't need to tell you all the stuff that was going on last year, particularly the first couple of months when things were sort of quieter than usual. But what I would stress for you, council members, is we are a steady provider of services. We have multiple sites throughout King County. In the normal times, we have offices in Renton, we have an office in Federal Way. We work closely with law enforcement and mental health and medical services. I want to just pull up here some of our key partnerships. Because what we do is that intersection and interface with victims through all the different services that they need. So it may be working with Auburn PD to make sure that victims are supported through the legal, through the reporting process. We certainly will be working with them if the prosecutor chooses to file charges. And I didn't notice and hear the frustration people are having with prosecutors. and hear the frustration people are having with prosecutors' office. We do too. Things are really stalled there, and we are seeing cases dropped from felonies to misdemeanors. This does not send the right message at all. So that is a concern of ours. We work closely with medical providers. We want to make sure that if victims need medical care, whether that's just making sure that they're physically okay, or whether they want to get a rape kit exam, we're making sure that they get those services, and we're closely with Auburn General Hospital. We also, we're a mental health provider, and we work with a lot of other mental health providers. So for example, Sound Mental Health, Valley Cities Mental Health, the Nexus. You, we, Auburn Youth and Family Services, now Nexus. And we also have real specific relationships with other, with different populations and different communities. So one of the things I want to point out is that our Don De Vos program for the Latinx communities, people who are Spanish-speaking, Spanish background, identify as Latinx, all of our staff are bilingual, bicultural, twenty-five percent of our, not, I mean, not all of our staff, but all of our services, excuse me, I am not bilingual. All of our services are available in Spanish as well as English. We have staff going from our front desk receptionist to staff in our finance department, to our therapists, our legal advocates, all are connected to the Latinx community. And this really makes a big difference for people. We're seeing an increase in people coming forward because they know us and they trust us. I want to, now we're gonna, we're really going to test things. I'm going to show you this video and see if this works. This gives you just a snapshot of how we provide services. That's okay. Jeff, this may, we may not be able to do this. Shoot. On the other hand, let me just. I am, I am not gonna, I will send this video to you. I apologize, council members. This is just, this is not working. But 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 I will say, the story that you will hear is of a woman who, who's Spanish-speaking, Spanish is her primary language. And she came to us, she had heard that her children had been sexually assaulted. She had two daughters in their, you know, like under, they're, they're in the ten to eighteen-year-old, eight-year-olds. And she came to us because they'd been assaulted by a family member. She didn't know where to turn. And she was very concerned about her daughter's mental health and how they were going to recover from this. What we were able to do, because we provide all sorts of services, again, in Spanish, is that we were able to get her the counseling that she needed in Spanish by people who are from the community. We were able to get her help through the legal process. Many times, and I'm sure you know this, people are threatened if they report they're going to be serious repercussions. They will, they'll lose their children. They will be deported. This is particularly for people who are refugees and immigrants. People are very fearful, and they're fearful of how that will work with law enforcement. We were able to tell her what to expect with law enforcement. We were able to work with her. We had Spanish-speaking advocates all the way through. The case went, took two years, as it often does. She, her kids stayed in therapy. And in the end, what she found is that she really was able to get on the other side of this. And most importantly, her daughters were able to. And she felt like, for the first time, somebody really could understand how she was feeling. And they provide, we provide the kind of support that her family needed. We see that kind of experience every single day from Auburn residents. You know, maybe the teen who is assaulted by a student at school, and how do we provide the kind of protection for her and for her family? How do we help her get a protection order? Or maybe the young woman who's raped by the landlord, and she can't move because she doesn't have rent, you know, first and last month's rent. And so how can we help her manage that? We may provide some client assistance fund. I mean, it's, it's these cases, day after day, that that we are responding to victims of sexual assault who live in Auburn. We, as, as I think you all know, we have a 24-hour resource line. And that's available in English. We also have a Spanish line during the day, and we can make referrals back and forth on that. Next month is April, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we're talking to all cities and hope that Auburn will join in proclaiming a Sexual Assault Awareness Month of April, and making sure that Auburn residents know that help is available. We're the only sexual assault services line in the whole county. So we're highly specialized, and we work with groups like 211 and all the other 24-hour services. Let me talk for a minute about legal advocacy and talk for a minute about therapy. These are our whole numbers for 2019. But, you know, you, again, we reference law enforcement and prosecutor's office. We're, we're a private nonprofit. We're independent. We're not part of King County. We work with people to help them through what is one of the more complicated systems that we have. What we know right now is that cases that go through the criminal justice process take at least two years. And that was before the pandemic. That was before this COVID shutdown, when things are markedly worse. But what we also know is that having an advocate to help people through that process can really make a big difference for their sense of agency, and for them to feel like they understand and they can make some decisions about what's going on. So we work with Auburn police, we work with the courts, we work with the prosecutor's office, to make sure that the victim's voice is through that whole process. At least fifty percent of the victims that we work with through this process are children and teens. And that's a pretty important process, pretty important thing for them and their families to have somebody who understands what's happening. One of the things that we have too in our offices in Renton, and when we get to the other side, we can have people over for an open house. I'd love to have you come and visit, because what we're doing is something that we have never done before, and that is having the interviewer, who is connected to the prosecutor's office, she has an office in our offices. What that means is when a child victim case goes forward, they have to be interviewed by a professional child interviewer connected to the prosecutor's office. Previously, this meant people having to go to the Kent Courthouse, to the Regional Justice Center in Kent. Not always the most friendly place, not the easiest place to get to for a lot of people. Now people can come to our office, and it's a friendly, inviting place. The interviewer also has a therapy dog or courtroom dog, I think, who's there, who also, you know, adds just a little bit more warmth to the experience. But what we're seeing is it's a really important way for children to feel like they're being heard, and they're being heard in an environment that's safe and where people believe them. So we are the only organization that can provide the service in English and in Spanish. The other thing we do, which is really hopeful and exciting, is around mental health. You know, we, we, we have seen people reclaim their lives in a way that I think everyone has been surprised. We know that when people experience trauma, there's a whole variety of biological and brain reactions that happen. And part of it is helping people change their thinking and learn how to change how they're reacting to something. So we do what's called trauma-specific, evidence-based therapy. And I will tell you, it works, whether it's a seven-year-old child, or whether it's a seventy-year-old adult. We see people throughout that whole range, and we're able to help them address PTSD, anxiety, depression, all sorts of reactions that, like literally get in the way of how they're able to function, that get in the way to the extent that sometimes people can't feel like they can work, that they're, and and again, this is in more normal times, how, that they may be avoiding any situation that brings them any reminder of the assault, that they're too depressed, that they have anxiety, that for children, they can't concentrate in school. What we're able to do in about sixteen to twenty weeks, which is a really short period of time, help people learn how to manage this. And we see PTSD scores going down, we see depression scores going down, and we see anxiety scores going, going down. This is really remarkable, and it's very encouraging work. And we've tested it in Latinx communities. We have the same kinds of positive results. So as council members, you, I, I hope we take some comfort in knowing what we're doing has been proven to be effective, and it works. And we have a completely sliding scale. So we take Medicaid, we're covered by MID, Mental Illness Drug Dependency, that I'm sure you're familiar with. And then for people who have some private insurers, we'll take that as well. But income is not a barrier to getting therapy. There are a couple other things I want to talk about with what we provide, and then tell you a little bit about what we've done in the last year. Case management. So it's the example I mentioned earlier, a young woman is raped in her apartment, and she can't move because she doesn't have that much money, and she can't afford to pay first and last month's rent and break her lease. We can help her get to other services that might be able to help her with that. We also have been, certainly now, this is a pandemic thing, we also know that so many people, and you know this, haven't had the, haven't had adequate internet to be able to go to school or to get therapy. Or they haven't, you know, they haven't had a place to be able to sit where they can get therapy. Or they don't, they're food insecure, or they need other kinds of services. And we can definitely help provide those services, because you can't deal with a sexual assault if you're worried about, you know, that I don't have enough to eat, or I can't feed my kids. So we, we provide services there. Another piece is that, because fifty percent of the children, of the victims we see are children, or teens, it's the whole family that we have to pay attention to. It's not just the child victim, but we want to be working with the parents to say, how can you support your child? And it's not that they don't want to support, but how do you, how do you manage this in your household? How do you understand what happened? If they have maybe been a victim themselves, this could bring up all sorts of stuff for them. So we provide a lot of support. And if, you know, if we can support the family, then that child's going to have a much better chance of getting on the other side of this. And then the final thing, client support, this is a limited amount of financial support that we can sometimes provide people to help them bridge until they can get their lives more stable. So let me just touch on how we've been providing services. So like you, I mean, and and I will say, council members, we just, you know, we've all done this, right? We sell, we just recognize that we have been working at home for the last twelve months. We had a little party in our parking lot to to bring people together, and we provided box lunches. And thank goodness, it didn't rain. And people had chair, beach chairs, and they had, you know, rugs on the, for the parking lot. And it was just, it was a way for people to come together, because we are a pretty collaborative social group. So, so we're doing that, and we're getting vaccinated, and we hope to be in, back in our offices sometime this summer in some way. But what I want you to know is, we never missed any services. With the day we shut down, the next week, we were seeing therapy clients via telehealth, HIPAA-compliant Zoom. We are graduating people from therapy who we have never met in person. This is a really big deal. Because we're able to get people in, they do the same, they do therapy, and you know, you can imagine, for some age groups like teens, it actually works pretty well. And and little kids, not so much, but it really has worked very, very well for a number of people. We're seeing them come into therapy. We've only met them by Zoom. We graduate them. And that means that they're testing out well on the tests that we give them, on the pre and post tests. So we know that this is working well. So we're seeing therapy in the same way, English and Spanish. We're also providing the legal advocacy, the help through the twenty-four, through the criminal justice system. This is harder, certainly, because the courts continue to be mostly closed. So we're doing most of that by phone and video, but we're staying closely in touch with our clients and talking with prosecutors and judges about how can we move this forward? Our 24-hour resource line, it's a 24-hour resource line, staff on call 24/7, never missed a beat. All of our services are still there. And what we're seeing is that people are still getting the services that we have always stood for. More mental health needs, I mean, you know this, it's, people are depressed, people are anxious. I think less so now with vaccines and spring coming. But we found ourselves really on the front line a lot, helping our clients and helping the community around resilience. We're here. It may look a little different from the way it has been, but we are still here for Auburn residents. I want to just touch to this side, side, and and again, I know you have been so supportive of human services overall. And and as we look at our relationships with all the cities, it's the stable funding that is extremely important. We're able to, this year, pull some other funding together to cover, you know, to sort of fill in the gaps, which we hope to be able to do through this year from from Auburn. But the stable predictable funding means that we can build on services and we can expand to meet the city, the Auburn residents' needs. If we don't have that, it becomes much more difficult to have that kind of solid foundation that everybody needs to be able to move forward. And, you know, I, I would say, I, I don't envy your position as city council members. It's a big job you've taken on. And as a resident, not of Auburn, but of my own city in Shoreline, I want to thank you for for doing that. And I know that there are so many different demands, from, again, homelessness and mental health and housing, that it's hard to know how to, how to make a dent in that. As a provider for forty years with the, for the city, say, where we can have more funding, or recognizing that that funding has to fund some of those foundational services, like sexual assault, domestic violence, some of the ones that that cross city boundaries, that are rampant throughout the county, and that untreated do connect back to homelessness, that untreated do connect back to other kind of mental health problems, drug and alcohol problems. I mean, we're sort of earlier in the primary, in the prevention scheme. If we can get at the trauma related to sexual assault, then it is less likely that there are going to be secondary and tertiary problems coming out of that. So we want to put ourselves in that place, too. I, that ends my presentation. I am more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Or, yeah.
Council, questions for Mary Ellen?
I'm going to drop this.
Oh, yes, we do have some. So let's start with Councilwoman Rowe.
Yeah, thank you very much. What a great presentation. So appreciated. Kind of scary numbers to me, you know, to see, you know, two out of three days, potentially, from the numbers that you showed, we have cases that are reported and that you have given, provided services for. I'm curious, I remember reading in the last year or so about unprocessed rape kits. Is this a problem that you have to deal with?
It, well, it is, it's, it's a problem that, that the prosecution in particular does. But, um, yes, Representative Tina Orwell out of Des Moines has really been a champion on this, and we're seeing some progress moving at the state level with a fast throughput lab down in Vancouver, Washington. And I think that there's a real awareness of what's actually happening out there. For us, the big, the biggest problem is people feel like, nothing, victims will feel like, why did I even bother? What, you know, it's just that sense of abandonment that we respond to, and we hear from victims on that. I, but I do think the, the good news is that we're seeing some, we're seeing some progress on that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Trump, manual.
Mary Ellen, thank you for coming and giving us such a great report. Serving on the human development, which now is the Wellness Committee, it's always nice to hear from some of our nonprofit organizations that help our community. And the numbers didn't surprise me, because being on the Domestic, but Regional King County Domestic Violence Task Force, we hear all of the different organizations come and share with us on what they're doing throughout the region. So it was nice to hear the members that are, you know, reflect Auburn. And thank you for continuing to serve them. And, yeah, it, I know it takes money to run, run your, your organization, and hopefully we'll be able to support you guys again. But I know And hopefully we'll be able to support you guys again, but I know it's a much needed. Uh, uh, you know, uh, place for our people to go to um and get the service. Now, you didn't say where you're located, uh, said there's one in Canton.
With the, we, our main office is in Renton and we've always, we've always been there. And we have an office in um Federal Way at the Health Department. Um, and then we also work, do some work on the east side at um Evergreen Health and uh friends of you. You know, excuse me, at youth care, but our main office is in Renton. But you know, if if I may say, that's, that's where we see the counseling clients. Our legal advocates are at the police department with the chief, we're at the courthouse with um cases going forward there. We're mobile. Um, in normal times, we spend a very large amount of money moving people around. Because we need to go where people are, we are, we are very familiar with how complicated it is. So we may be meeting with a client connected to Nexus, for example. We, I mean, we, we go where people are, we don't, we don't just stay there.
Thank you for doing such a good, uh, great job and continue to do it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sterns.
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor, um, wow, um, tha- thank you, uh, Mary Ellen. Um, I have a, a couple of questions, um, three if you can fit them in, but the first one was. Um, do you have a domestic abuse response team that goes on site with law enforcement?
We do not, that is, I think, a uniquely domestic violence situation, uh, domestic violence related service. Um, and and no, and we, and and that's not something that sexual assault services sort of broadly tend to do. Um, what we find is that when an assault occurs. Uh, the, the, you know, unlike domestic violence, it's not somebody usually in the house at the time. I mean, we, with domestic violence, there's a whole nother complication with. Um, with a perpetrator usually being there with a sexual assault, they're much more likely to. Um, reach out afterward, I mean, obviously afterwards, but it may be quite a while afterwards. So that's the back to the rape kit question too, that's a limited period of time. But we, we don't go out with law enforcement in those situations.
Okay, and and then you, you work with the high schools on like, you know, teen, teen, I mean, your clients are so young. I mean, do you, do you work with, what kind of work do you do with the high schools?
Yeah, good question, well, not as, not enough, we would love to be doing more. Um, uh, we, so funding cuts have made it that we have one prevention staff person, we should have at least two or three. Um, so what we do do is in, again, normal times, we're in the cl- in the high schools. Um, we do a lot of work with Renton right now, um, with Renton School District because. That's, that's where we are, but what we're finding too is that a number of the high schools and you're probably familiar with this are having. Um, uh, clubs where they're really looking at issues of consent. And um, healthy relationships and we're serving as advisors with those. Um, we're also providing when, when we, when the refers went into shutdown. We're doing a lot of work with teachers across the region, here's some online tools that you can be using. Here's, and we've come, gone and zoomed into classes right now to talk about consent. It's a, that's, that's probably not the easiest way to do it. Um, just given the complications of Zoom and teens, but you are right, we um, we're in the schools. We'd like to be in the schools a lot more.
Wow, great, thanks, um, thanks, thanks for all you're doing and. Yeah, we, we just, you know, you, you may have seen the presentation from our junior city council. But that seems like that would be a, a perfect partner for you all.
Absolutely, and I, and I do think, I mean, this is, there are so many ways. Mayor, I'm happy to send some ideas about sexual assault, oh, the council, about sexual assault awareness month. Because this could be an ongoing discussion, doesn't have to even be led by us and someone says just this, that's, that's great. Because the more that that all of us can be talking with, with the junior council, here's what healthy relationships look like. This is what consent is, here's how you can help a friend, here's how you can support and intervene. All of that stuff contributes to an environment where sexual assault doesn't need to exist.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary Ellen, thank you very much for the presentation. And uh, for serving and supporting the residents of Auburn. And also for continuing on with the uh services you provide during the uh pandemic. Like you said, over this last year has been really different for all of us and I'm, I'm so happy to see that you've been able to. Support others as you've been able to go forward with the, with your services during the pandemic overall.
Thank you and and thank you for all you're doing. Um, it is, I, I, I can't imagine how difficult it's been running a city. During this time, so I, I, I appreciate each and every one of you for what you do.
Thank you. Director Tate, any other words for you?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, great. Mary Ellen, thank you again, really appreciate your time this evening and for being able to join us.
Thanks for your patience, I'll send you the videos.
All right, great, appreciate that, thank you. All right, Council, we will now move on to ordinance number six eight one five, back to Director Thomas.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me again tonight, um, I'm going to share my screen for. The second presentation of this evening from the Finance Department. Um, this is more of a routine presentation though, this is our first budget amendment of the biennium. So we do usually four budget amendments a year, so a total of eight budget amendments per each biennium. And this is the very first one and I'm. We're gonna try to page forward, there we go. Um, we actually have several, um, several adjustments in this um budgeted amendment request. Um, I'm breaking, I'm going to break them down between the general fund requests and then all of the other funds. Um, within the general fund adjustment requests, we really have four different types of requests and I sorted them by those different types. The, the first types are really just enhancements to previously approved programs. So whether it was, um, whether you've approved some aspect of the program before. And this is a budget amendment to that, we, we are asking for some more money, but it doesn't have any other supporting revenue, that's the first, those are the first. Um, items on this list. The next group of items are carryforward items. Um, those are being paid from the beginning fund balance, so they had been originally approved in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty budget. They weren't spent, so essentially that money kind of just stayed in the savings account, I guess you could say. We are asking then, because it was in fund balance to um for council to reappropriate that into twenty twenty one. The next wave of requests are tied to mostly grant funding, so. Um, when we're putting together the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget, a lot of the, the. Actual dollar figures for the grants that we had been budgeting for and planning for aren't necessarily known yet. And so we don't budget for those grant programs until we actually get the grant award. So um, we've got several grants on there and then um, the very last two are brand new programs and brand new requests. That um, haven't been to council before and we're asking for um approval. I'm going to run through this list, I think, pretty quickly, um, there, they should be, they should be pretty hopefully informative and and pretty interesting. If you have follow up questions, I'll do my, my best at answer each one of them. Um, the first request for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, this is a similar program, this kind of dovetails on. Um, our community court and our King County Court contract that we have. In that contract, we are partnering, partnering to provide community court at the Auburn Consolidated Resource Center. Um, down on Auburn Way North. And in order to get community court up and running, there are certain things that we need to get um. Ready, so um, the judges and um the staff as well as the defendants can actually come and enter the building. So this is going to be um building some walls, I'm doing, updating the bathrooms, getting. IT um and internet into the building as well as some just bare bones on desks and office furniture. Um, for people to be able to sit and have laptops if if necessary. Um, the next, the next request for thirty two thousand dollars is also related to the Auburn Consolidated Resource Center. And this is for the A and E contract, so that's architect, architectural and engineering contract. And that is to help us build out and plan. How that space is going to look for the service providers that are ultimately going to be working out of the A C R C. Uh, as well as any subtenants that we um hopefully have um signed up before the end of the year. Twenty five thousand dollars is for the McGrath assessment. This was a study um for the Police Department that we had done a year ago. It was to kind of do a di- deep dive into the Police Department morale and um retention. And part of the original assessment was to do a follow up after one year, do a follow up survey. With the Police Department and the staff one year later. And that's what um this twenty five thousand dollars is, to be able to complete that follow up survey. And the work that McGrath um will do in compiling the information from that, that follow up survey. We're asking to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our um diversity, equity and inclusion program. And that's a program, of course, that um the councils all very aware of. Um, but we're asking to um bring a consultant on to help our um diversity and inclusion manager. Um, with really the facilitation and the rollout of training citywide to um staff. Twenty five thousand dollars is a request from the City Attorney's Office um related to public records. So this is related to um fulfilling public records requests as well as um subpoenas. The subpoena work that is sometimes related to the public records request process. And we've just had a lot of requests lately and um the city's, the city attorney's office. Um, does not have enough in their current budget to manage all the different requests associated um with the public records mandate and laws. The facility master plan, um, this is actually money that's going to be going to the facilities fund. Um, twenty two thousand five hundred is going to be coming from the general fund. This is really more of a realignment adjustment, so the total, the total cost is ninety thousand dollars and it was originally budgeted to be coming out of the general fund. We are doing a budget amendment to have the general fund pay twenty two thousand five hundred. And then you'll see it again on the next slide, we're um absorbing some of the costs with our utility funds as well. Since um a large portion of the facility master plan was to look at our maintenance and operation buildings. That help our utility staff um do their work throughout the day. It does have um a tie to the utility funds as well, so this is reallocating the cost of that study across multiple funds. Next to it, we're not, we're moving into, it's a new request, but it is funded with an offsetting revenue. Um, this is the signal systems repairs and maintenance, this, this is for insurance recoveries. We have damage done to our transportation signals and systems and we get insurance money. Um, to help us repair and replace those damaged systems. So we have the seventy five thousand dollar expenditure, but that's also being offset by the insurance recovery money that we receive from our. From WCIA. The senior center fire suppression system replacement, now we're kind of moving into those carryforward items. Items that are more previously approved um in twenty twenty. And we are, we would like to pay for those out of the additional fund balance that we had coming into twenty twenty one. Because we didn't um spend down what we had originally budgeted. So that was forty five thousand dollars for the senior centers fire suppression system. Will be transferring that money to the facilities fund and the facilities fund will be completing that work. The facade improvement program for thirty thousand five hundred, this is actually a specific award for um a grant match program to a specific. Um, business and while the grant award was awarded in twenty twenty. Um, we have not actually reimbursed them their grant funds, so we're asking to um carry that money forward and reimburse them. Thirteen thousand dollars for the C D B G coronavirus grant for human services. Um, again, this is carryforward money and it was money awarded in twenty twenty, it was not spent, we would like to reallocate it and spend it in twenty twenty one. And that goes, that's the same exact um scenario with the hundred and four thousand dollars from the King County. Um, grant for the senior sources resource hub, that is twenty, a twenty twenty grant. That we did not spend down in twenty twenty, the senior center resources hub is. Uh, is a program to help connect isolated, um, both socially and geographically. Um, isolated seniors with different resources um within the Auburn community. So we're asking to spend the grant from twenty twenty. Immediately following that, now we're, um, these are new grants that that we have received in twenty twenty one, we've been rewarded either at the very end of twenty twenty. Or in the beginning phases of twenty twenty one and we need to get our budget aligned with the book, the revenue we expect to receive. As well as the offsetting expenditures, so it has a zero net impact on the general fund. Because we will spend the money and then we'll get reimbursed for those programs. But we have the twenty twenty one grant award for the senior, the senior resources hub program from King County. We also have the Department of Commerce Grant for the residential building capacity program for forty nine thousand nine hundred. We have the King County Grant funding our Auburn International Farmers Market, this is to help with our promotional and marketing campaign of our farmers market. Now, the Four Culture Grant Auburn Arts Alley Project for twenty three thousand dollars. This is for specific, for a specific project that the city of Auburn is partnering with um the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. For a carving, the twenty three thousand dollars is the money that the city will pay. For the um wood and the Indian tribe, the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe will be donating the wood carvers. Skills, skills and time and that, that carving will sit in front of the Arts and Culture Center. With the entrance of the Arts and Culture, Culture Center. We have another Four Culture Grants, um, Grants for twelve thousand six hundred and that is for, just generally for our arts program. And then and thirty six hundred dollars for the historic preservation of our city owned um landmarks, historic buildings and landmarks. That brings me to the last two items on our general fund list, which is um the Community Center Gym Floor Refinish. Um, again, this will be money, we'll be transferring forty thousand six hundred to the facilities fund, the facilities fund will oversee the project. And and getting the work completed. Some of the stripes off the gym floor had been removed, um, leaving the wood underneath those stripes exposed. And unfortunately, which is um not good for the wood, you need to have that wood um finished, plus we need the stripes back on. So we will need to do a complete gym floor refinish to to correct that damage. And then golf course turf equipment replacement, so this is to transfer twenty seven thousand one hundred dollars to the equipment replacement fund. First, for new turf equipment. Um, this is just the residual amount that isn't currently funded in the equipment replacement fund, we'll see it again on the next slide. But the, the overall piece of equipment itself is um two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. Most of it is, most of that amount of that equipment is already fully funded through our, through our equipment replacement cycle program. Um, the difference was twenty seven thousand one hundred is not funded, so the general fund will be um paying the, the difference. So in total. Um, we're requesting an in, in, an increase to our expenditure, general fund expenditure budget of eight hundred and twenty two thousand six hundred. Which is offset by new revenue of a hundred and eighty nine thousand nine hundred. And one hundred and ninety two thousand five hundred is coming from on spent fund balance on projects from twenty twenty. That had not been completed, so the net impact then to our, our bottom line in the general fund would be. Um, a negative four hundred and forty thousand two hundred, so. Uh, we, that just reduces our, our estimated ending fund balance um at the end of the year by a, a little over four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Were there any questions about the general fund adjustments?
Questions, Council? I've not seen everybody, but seen or hearing anybody doing.
Okay, well, then I'll move on to all the other funds. Um, just as, just as exciting as the general fund projects, I can promise you that. Um, these I did not organize in the same way, only because I went by fund, because we have multiple funds that we're working with on this slide versus just the one general fund. So I'll try to talk through them a little bit and explain them as we go through them. So for arterial streets fund, which is a special revenue fund that we're asking to increase the budget by sixty five thousand dollars for. Um, just increased project cost that we hadn't anticipated for the M Street Southeast sidewalk improvement project. That had been originally budgeted. We are asking for twenty two thousand dollars for the spillman and we're using this, the next two are from the drug forfeiture fund. So this is money that has to be spent very specifically um towards um drug enforcement activities in the city of Auburn. So we're, I'm asking to use a portion of our drug forfeiture money, twenty two thousand dollars for the spillman mobile arrest module. It's a records management system for um the, the police reports that the officers file. And this is a much quicker system to be able to get information entered. And the idea is it's quicker, more efficient and it gets officers um back out, helping support the community rather than um filling out. Reports, spending too much time filling out reports. On the next one from the drug forfeiture fund is the canine purchase. For ten thousand dollars, you may recall this was actually approved in one of our budget amendments at the end of twenty twenty. The, the canine hasn't from purchased yet, but we still need to make the purchase. We're asking that we can use the money from the fund balance to make the purchase this year. Then in the housing and community development fund, this is the, the main portion of our CDBG grants and our, both of our CDBG grants. One is the primary grant that we receive annually and then the other one is the coronavirus grant. And this is, these are the full grant amounts that we have for programming our CDBG programs. So again, it has a zero net impact because we, it is a hundred percent funded. The program that we provide is a hundred percent funded with the grant revenue. Four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and that's remitting. Impact fees to Valley Regional Fire Authority during the permit and development. Activity that happens in our community development department. We collect fire impact fees on behalf of Valley Regional Fire Authority. We collect that money and we hold it in what we call an agency, kind of in an agency capacity. We don't ever consider that money our money. We're holding it on their behalf. We, we just need the expenditure authority to send it to them. Four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the money that we have collected. In twenty twenty. In the capital improvement fund, we are asking for another carry forward request. To, for the arts and culture center roof, we're requesting to use wheat money. To replace the roof at the arts and culture center. And thirty thousand dollars, an additional thirty thousand dollars is actually being funded with the four culture grants. So the total project is actually more than a hundred and fifty. But we're offsetting the cost with the grant from four culture. We're asking to also use wheat money, a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for the community center parking lot repairs. That had originally been budgeted for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. Our, the final estimate is actually got us looking at more at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those parking lot repairs. So we're asking to increase that budget by a hundred thousand. You'll see here the water fund, the twenty two thousand five hundred for the facility master plan. This is related to the request earlier in the general fund. So this is, you'll see both the water. Sewer and storm drainage fund have that same amount, twenty two thousand five hundred. That's their portion of the cost of the facility master plan. Also in the water fund is one point six million dollars and that is to bump up the lead, lead service line project that had originally been budgeted in twenty twenty two. We're using a portion or a large portion, one point six million dollars. Of that project is going to be used with the bond proceeds that we had issued back in mid twenty twenty. We bumped it up because we are also utilizing, we're leveraging drinking water. Resource loans from the state, really low interest loans from the state. I'm a need, need to have the project bid by mid year this year. So we're asking to bump that project up so we can utilize that low interest loan program from the state. Going down to solid waste, the seasonal staff for litter control, eighty one thousand dollars. This is a new program request. I think that we've heard a lot. Lately from our citizens about the need for increased litter control. You may all know that we have waste management has a clean escapes program that they provide for us. They have. A two person staff that drives specific routes every day throughout the city. Taking care of litter control on very specific routes. We want to enhance the work that waste management does with some seasonal staff of our own. And so the eighty one thousand dollars would, would be the cost of four seasonal staff for about six months of work. We do have the trucks and supervision available with existing resources. So the increase, the budget increase would just be for the, the cost of hiring those seasonal staff. So they can really enhance the work that waste management is doing with their litter control program throughout the city. Insurance fund for thirty thousand dollars. The insurance fund is where we actually pay our WCIA premiums, our annual premiums. Our annual premium costs more than we had originally anticipated. This is where, this is our premiums for. Auto property and liability and boiler insurance. So we need to increase our expenditure budget by thirty thousand dollars to cover those premiums. IT has some Esri projects from the prior year that were, have not been completed yet. So they're asking that they use some of that leftover money, a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. To complete those projects this year. That would include the lion's share of this request would be for the Microsoft three sixty five upgrade. As well as some aerial imagery upgrades and as well as the software upgrades to the, the Esri system itself. And then the last two items, I'm coming out of the equipment rental capital fund. We would like to replace the brine machine, which is the machine that we do road de-icing with. It has. Reached its end of life. We need a new one. It has been, the cost of that has been fully recovered. So. Over the lifetime of that machine, we've been slowly putting away money for its replacement and we would like to spend fifty two thousand dollars from the capital fund. To pay, to buy a new one. And then the last item is the golf course turf equipment. We talked about on the previous slide. Most of it has been funded with the exception of twenty seven thousand dollars, which we'd be transferring from the general fund into the equipment capital fund. And for a total of two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for the new golf course turf equipment. So for all other funds excluding the general fund, the net impact is an increase in budget authority for two point seven million dollars. And that comes from new expenditures totaling a little over four million dollars. Offset by new revenue of a little over one million dollars and then using three hundred and one thousand dollars of our fund balance from twenty twenty. Any questions about the, any of the projects on the, on this list?
Questions, counsel? I guess that's a lot of stuff, Jamie.
And then just one last slide to show you how this impacts our estimated ending fund balance for twenty twenty one. We started, these are our estimated ending fund balances. They have not taken into account. Any of our adjusted beginning fund balances. So this is all based on what our original budgeted ending fund balance for twenty twenty one was. We had originally budgeted ten point five million dollars to end twenty twenty one in the general fund with these adjustments. We would end twenty twenty, twenty twenty one with ten million eighty four thousand five hundred and eighty five. And then the same thing for all of the other funds combined. So these are all other funds combined. We had budgeted for ninety nine point one million dollars in ending fund balance. If we increase our net expenditures by two point seven million dollars, that would leave us with an adjusted estimated ending fund balance. Of ninety six point four million dollars. So if there's no questions about those projects or the estimated ending fund balance. I don't have any other information to share with you.
Okay. All right, counsel, one last chance. Any questions for Jamie? All right, Jamie, we're not seeing any.
Okay.
So that was a lot of stuff. So thank you for your presentation and as always being so fiducially responsible. We appreciate that very much. So thank you. Okay. All right, counsel, we will now move on to resolution number five, five, eight, four with Director Martinson.
It's not Director Martinson, but it's Aaron Barber and I'm the assistant director of.
Welcome, Aaron.
In the risk management. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and deputy mayor and counsel. Today I'd like to discuss with you renewing the public defense services contract. Which would have a contract term date of April fifteenth, twenty twenty one through December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Upon council approval. And as you may know, the city is required per RCW. To make public defense services available to all persons who qualify after the city has provided financial screening. Therefore, HR is bringing for resolution number five, five, eight, four. For discussion at council study session today. And for council approval on April fifth, twenty twenty one. And HR went to the municipal services focus area on March seventeenth, twenty twenty one to update that group. And just an important note is that having the contract approved by April fifth. Will allow for the contract to be updated for preparation of the opening of community court, which is tentatively set. To begin in either mid April or mid May. And so the contract is with Casey and Grove Law Firm and this was originally implemented after going through a request for proposal. Selection process and it began on July first, twenty thirteen, the contract did. And it's managed by us, the HR risk management department. And since that contract was implemented, we've extended that contract through three different addendums. And the first addendum had an effective date of July first, twenty fifteen. The second addendum was on January first, twenty seventeen. And the third addendum was on July first, twenty eighteen. And that is the final and last addendum that we've recently gone through and it had an expiration date of December thirty first, twenty twenty. And so HR and risk management was proceeding to extend the current contract through another new addendum. However, legal recommended that since they're new council members that ought to be aware of this contract and that the contract had expired. Before the re-execution, that it would be best to present this renewal to council for approval. And so one of the reasons that the addendum was delayed was to try to evaluate what the community court would look like and the amount of work that it would add to. The public defender. And another reason for reviewing the contract was for legal to provide some general housekeeping to the contract that was originally established. And had not been revised in nearly eight years. And then finally, we also wanted to add new language to reference the addition of the community court. So. Bringing forward the court is appropriate for multiple reasons at this time. And in the future, any new addendums to the contract to the main contract will be executed prior to the expiration. So. The main priority for the revised contract is obviously to focus on the cost of the public defender contract. And we successfully negotiated and will remain at a status quo for cases through the traditional court model. And this is a cost of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. And this is the same compensation for the public defender since July twenty eighteen. But also we had another priority, which was to put some language in for community court and for cases referred to the community court. And so this will be charged at two hundred and seventy five dollars per case. And so this charge was negotiated in addition to the annual charge. And due to the unknown complexities of how those cases will need to be managed. We decided to do that, that at this time with this renewal contract. And the city will discuss with the public defender prior to the end of the year, the increased workload to the public defender. In managing the community court cases and adjust if appropriate. So. Finally, the contract has been reviewed by both, by all parties, which includes HR risk management. Legal and the public defender and all parties have provided their analysis. And required language updates from twenty thirteen until now. And so if there are any specific questions on the contract provisions, please let us know and we're happy to discuss. And I believe that somebody is from the legal department also may answer any technical questions on the, on the contract provisions. So. Thank you for your time and look forward to the discussion.
That's where we're bagging.
Real quick one, Aaron. I was wondering, is this the type of contract that would be competitively bid at any time?
Yeah. So the last time we went out for RFP was in twenty thirteen. We have not gone out to RFP since that time because I think in general, we're really happy with the services that Casey and Grove provide. But it is not.
Do you think this would offer us an opportunity for the legal firms to maybe sharpen their pencil a little bit? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is a lot of money. Yep. I think in our minds that we haven't had an increase since twenty eighteen and I know it was a unique year for, due to COVID. In twenty twenty, I will definitely have discussions about whether we ought to go out for RFP.
Yeah, eight years is a little long to go on with one firm without at least testing the, the temperature of the water out there. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Plant the seed.
Thank you.
Those were my turns.
Um, thank you, deputy mayor. But I may have missed this, but you said the contract goes up to. Twenty three fifty in terms of the number of cases per year. Um, why, why is that number? Is that something I just, I'm curious?
Yeah, I think that when we established the contract, we didn't quite know how many cases we would get annually. We moved in November of twenty twelve. To King County District Court. And so we didn't know when we went out to bid. Would we be around eighteen hundred? Would we be at twenty three hundred? But we needed an escalator because we pay them a monthly. Fee regardless of their caseload. And so just looking at that, I'm pulling up some stats right now. In twenty eighteen, they. Had two thousand two hundred and forty seven cases. In twenty nineteen, they had one thousand eight hundred and fifty two. And in twenty twenty, obviously it was a unique year. So they saw one thousand one hundred and forty five cases. So we've been trending down, but it might be different with some of the decisions that have been coming out at the county and state level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron? Okay, Aaron, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will now move into our community wellness discussion items. And for that portion of the evening, I will turn it over to council member Malanga.
Hi, good evening. So for the community development block grant, I'd like to ask Director Tate to come and present.
Uh, thank you, council member Malanga. And I will actually turn it over to our community services manager, Joyce Scott. Who will provide a presentation on our annual caper report.
Thanks, Jeff, and good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for having me. I'm Joyce Scott and I'm our city's community services manager. I appreciate being here and I also recognize that you've had a long evening. So I will try to be concise in my presentation. Hopefully you can all see my screen. So each year, I come before council to talk about a few different types of funding. And this evening, it's going to be a little bit unique because we did receive some additional funding last year related to coronavirus that's not usual for us. So typically I'm here to talk about either our general fund human services dollars or our community development block grant dollars that come from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This evening, I'm actually going to be talking about both our regular community development block grant dollars that we received in twenty twenty. As well as some of the dollars that we received from HUD. To respond to coronavirus using community development block grant funds. So between these two pots of funding, we're going to be talking about a little over one point five million dollars. Though keep in mind, as we are having these discussions this evening. That a large portion of those dollars were actually allocated at the very end of twenty twenty. So while you, you'll see them reflected in some of our financial documentations. And certainly in our descriptions of our plans for twenty twenty one. We haven't actually spent down all of those dollars yet, though they have been fully contracted at this point. So we are very lucky to receive community development block grant dollars on an annual basis. So HUD oversees the CDBG program and this is an entitlement program. So we receive annual grants that are based on a formula. So we don't have to apply for funding and we have no ability to change kind of the amount of funding that we're going to receive. It's a formula that Congress approves each year and it's based on a number of demographics in our community, including. A proportion of folks living on low incomes, the age of our housing stock, our population and some other items. So in order to qualify for us to use these funds. The projects that we choose have to align with HUD's national objectives. They have to be eligible under HUD's guidelines. And they have to principally benefit low and moderate income persons. We have a number of tasks in front of us each year related to CDBG. Our, our annual performance and evaluation report or the caper is due each year in March to report on the prior program year. Our program year runs from January to December. It varies from city to. Our program year runs from January to December. It varies from city to city, but we're lucky enough to have it run concurrently with our fiscal year, which is certainly makes things easier for us. So you will typically hear from me in the last quarter of the year as we prepare our action plan for the following year, and then in the first quarter of the year as we report back on what we did the prior year. There are a number of administrative requirements that go along with the CDBG program. This is just one of them. So I will often be in front of council talking about our strategic plan, our five-year consolidated plan, which we actually just redid recently for our twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four program years. We'll talk every year about our annual action plans. We usually have two public hearings throughout the year for those. And then we ensure that we are reporting on a timely basis of all of the ways which we've worked towards meeting all of the goals outlined in these other planning documents. There are a number of different types of activities that are eligible for CDBG funding. Some of these activities make sense for our city based on what we're working on, and some of them don't. A lot of factors influence that decision, most of which is is our five-year consolidated plan, which lays out a strategic plan that is approved by council for how we should be allocating these funds over the next five-year period. Some of the types of activities you see here are items that we typically engage in every year. So for example, public services, we can allocate up to fifteen percent of our annual allocation. And that is human service type activities, so medical and dental services or counseling services, sheltering services, things like that. We also use our funding to support our housing repair program, which provides free home repairs to low-income homeowners in Auburn. And we also utilize it for ADA improvements for some of our public facilities, for our sidewalks. You usually see that reflected each year. We work very closely with our Public Works Department to make that happen and identify in particular, low-income residential areas in Auburn that could really benefit from ADA improvements to their sidewalks. And we do utilize some of the funding to help support the staff time that goes into administering these funds. So we had a new source of funding last year, so HUD allowed us to receive additional funds related to coronavirus that had a slightly different set of rules than our usual CDBG funding source. And we were able to use CV funds for activities in a different proportion than what is normally allowed. So one of the benefits of these funding sources that came through last year with the coronavirus relief funds is that they did not impose that same public services cap. And in fact, they elected to lift the public services cap for our twenty twenty funds as well if we wanted to reallocate unspent funds to go towards coronavirus response in the community. So the types of services that we saw that would be eligible to receive those funding, that funding was things like food access, childcare assistance, eviction prevention, health services, and career navigation. And these are actually all examples of activities that the council supported us in funding at the end of twenty twenty for the twenty twenty-one program year. Again, we could utilize some of those costs to support the staff costs that were incurred overseeing this. We actually elected to set aside a very small proportion of these dollars for for the staff, internal staff costs. So in twenty twenty, our CDBG funds supported a few really key activities. As I mentioned, our minor housing repair program, so providing low-income homeowners with needed repairs, especially for for seniors to be able to safely age in place, to have items like ramps installed on their home or to address immediate health and safety issues like active water intrusion into the home or broken heating or water systems. We completed ADA improvements at two sidewalk locations in Auburn, and that was overseen by our Public Works Department. We provided health and dental services, and these were regular, our regular CDBG funds. And so these were health and dental services that were unrelated to COVID. These were pre-planned services for un- and underinsured low-income Auburn residents, and we also helped support some of that city staff time. As I mentioned earlier, and as you saw in Jamie's presentation about the budget amendments, there were funding, there were about two hundred and five thousand dollars of CDBG funds that we identified in late twenty twenty that could be reallocated to COVID response. So being able to utilize the fact that CDBG lifted that public service cap, that we could spend more money on human services. We came before council in October of twenty twenty after going through a public RFP process for public services, and we were able to reallocate funding for childcare services, food access for seniors living in low-income housing in Auburn, job training, and behavioral health services at the Arcadia Youth and Young Adult Shelter. Our CV funds in twenty twenty supported COVID testing and treatment for low-to-moderate income Auburn residents. That was with our partners at HealthPoint. It also helps support rental assistance and eviction prevention services. In addition, in twenty twenty-one, based on what was approved by council late in twenty twenty, we have contracted for additional childcare services related to COVID, a significant portion towards eviction prevention and rent assistance to address that ongoing need for households and individuals impacted by COVID and career navigation services as well. Some of the key facts and figures that are called out in the CAPER report, and if you are looking for more detail, please feel free to dive in on, I apologize for the format. It is a required HUD format, so it's not the most navigable. But we served forty households through our housing repair program, so forty households received rehab of their existing units. And again, that ranged from immediate health and safety needs, and that was primarily what we focused on during COVID. So we limited the amount of time and opportunities that staff had to enter folks' homes. We wanted to keep both clients and our staff safe, but recognize that we did have to respond when there was no water or active water intrusion into the home, or if the household did not have heat, or if there was an issue with egress. So if there was a situation where the resident in that home was not able to safely enter or exit the building, we still helped support those repairs. There were sixty-one Auburn residents that were provided with regular dental services across seventy-one visits and one hundred and three residents that were provided with regular medical services across two hundred and eighteen visits. That was from our regular CDBG allocation rather than the coronavirus funds. One hundred and sixty-two Auburn residents received rent assistance preventing eviction. And again, I'll just point out that we were very late in receiving our second round of CV funding, and we did reallocate some of those twenty twenty funds to go towards eviction prevention. So this number really only reflects the very first allocation of CV funds that we received that went towards a combination of eviction prevention services and COVID testing and treatment. Two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two Auburn residents received those COVID testing and treatment services, which was a huge increase from what we had anticipated. I think that originally, there had been an estimate of three to five hundred residents served, and we ended up having over two thousand eight hundred residents receiving those services free of charge. And as well as thirty-five hundred approximately Auburn residents benefited from the sidewalk ADA improvements. So I included a few demographic data points in the presentation, and again, there's more within the report if you'd like to do a deeper dive. But I just wanted to highlight the income level of the residents served. So for this program, for CDBG generally, it is, its goal is to primarily benefit low-to-moderate income persons. For the city of Auburn, in our consolidated plan, we have really prioritized serving folks living on the lowest incomes. So folks at at that zero to thirty percent of AMI. So you can see here eighty-four percent of the folks served across all of these services fell into that zero to thirty percent category. And that includes the rent assistance, the housing repair services, our medical and dental services, and the COVID testing and treatment. And it also applies, going forward, you'll see in our twenty twenty-one report that you'll see a similar kind of demographic for all of the services that were laid out for COVID response this year. So that childcare and food access and job job creation and behavioral health supports. I also included some data on race and ethnicity of the folks served across these programs. This is based on HUD categories, so it's not necessarily how folks self-identify. You often see that reflected in the other category as the folks that are providing services in our community want to make sure that the the way that they ask for data is is meaningful and safe and what they are gathering is impactful. So it doesn't always match up kind of one-for-one with the categories that HUD gives us. But you can get a pretty good picture of who's receiving services through the CDBG contracts that we are supporting. So like I mentioned, I tend to be in front of council at a few key points of the year. So our CAPER is due every year on March thirty-first, and so this this CAPER will be submitted in the next week or so. We will be executing our agreement with HUD next month for our twenty twenty-one dollars that we have already contracted for them. Unfortunately, HUD is not very timely in how they get the funds to us, but we don't let that get in the way of agencies being able to provide services starting January one. We will start to conduct our public engagement process to hear input from community members, from agencies, from others on how we should be prioritizing our funds in twenty twenty-two. We'll do a lot of that from kind of July to September, and you'll see me back in front of you likely in October to talk about our twenty twenty-two annual action plan and how we propose to spend those funds. Those, that is usually approved by council in the first part of November. So we certainly have multiple touchpoints left this year for our CDBG program. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any question, members? I think I saw Councilmember Topman you was hand up earlier.
Yes, can I still ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Joy, how can we get the information, or wait a minute? My question is, is on the Latinos Hispanic, it's only one percent? Is is that because they live in apartments and trailers?
So for the race and ethnicity data, it's actually thirty-nine percent identified as Hispanic or Latino and sixty-one percent identified as as not Hispanic or Latino.
Oh, because on the chart that I'm looking here, maybe I'm colorblind because I see I see the one percent for the Hispanic.
Yeah, I believe there may have been an earlier an error in the slide that was in the packet, but the data that's included in the CAPER is accurate, and you should see reflected within that report that thirty-nine percent of the individual individuals served across these programs identified as Hispanic or Latino.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sterns has a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Malanga. I was wondering, of the hundred and sixty-two Auburn residents to receive rent assistance to prevent eviction, was that everyone who applied, or was that just a percentage of people who applied? How does that work?
So for that specifically, it was actually, there's a couple nuances there, I think. One is that that's just the folks who were able to receive services in twenty twenty before our grant year closed. So both of those contracts that were approved in May of twenty twenty by council for eviction prevention and rent assistance actually spanned twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So neither of those contracts have been fully expended at this point. One of them is likely to be this month, and then the other should be by next month. But there actually have been a lot more individuals served through both of those contracts, just not captured in the twenty twenty program year. So you'll see that reflected in our next year's report as well. For each of those programs, they operate a little bit differently, so it depends kind of program to program. But typically, folks will apply to the agency, and we have Catholic Community Services and Multi Service Center both providing rental assistance. And those agencies work with folks to make sure, first of all, that they don't have other active applications that might be coming through. Because as you may recall during our earlier discussions, one of the challenging provisions of the CDBG funds is that we have to verify that there's absolutely no duplication of benefits involved. So we can't provide CDBG funds to pay a cost that another agency could cover or another fund source could cover. So they have to work pretty intensively to folks with folks to make sure that they've kind of followed through on all of those avenues. And then they work to identify other supports that might be needed to help stabilize them at the same time that they're covering, you know, one to three months of rent to help support them.
So I mean, how does that work? I mean, I I'm just wondering, because I, you know, say, I need, you know, a thousand dollars to not get evicted. Catholic services gives me five hundred. I'm still five hundred short. So can I get five hundred from the city? That's not duplicate. I mean, I need that.
Right. So so I will say for our CDBG-funded programs, they do provide kind of the full month's worth of what's needed. So there are a lot of programs that are that operate in the community on, you know, paying the last one hundred and twenty-five dollars or paying fifty dollars here and fifty dollars there. It's really challenging to be able to say that you have that that fund has prevented the eviction if it's only covering, you know, fifty to two hundred dollars of of that person's rent owed. So for these funds, they are covering full month's worth of rent and ensuring that there are agreements in place to not move to evict those those clients. In terms of the verification, it is a matter of ensuring that the total amount that's owed and then all of the potential funding sources to pay that off. So if you are owing, you know, three or four months of rent, and you have three different agencies that will each support one month's worth of rent, as long as that can be documented, that's enough for HUD to show that we're not duplicating what's needed, but we can't pay more than what is owed. And if they end up having another fund source come through and kind of backdating that payment, that's where it starts to get a little bit challenging. But our agencies work really closely together, and one of the things that we started up in our Community Services Division under Human Services was a rental assistance learning circle. So we actually meet monthly with every agency altogether that provides rental assistance that we fund so that we can work through all of these challenges or how are the agencies working together collectively to ensure that folks' needs are being met and that we're managing these duplication of benefits issues.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm checking. I don't see any hands raised. So if not, Joy, thank you so much for that great presentation, and thank you, Director Tate. I'll turn it back over to Deputy Mayor DePurcy.
Thank you, Councilmember Malanga. All right, we're at the end, folks. Any other discussion items this evening? Any new business? Okay, thank you to all our presenters once again, and for everybody for their patience for this long evening. Have a great rest of the evening and stay safe out there. We are adjourned.
Wait, I had a question real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
I think we ought to have the mayor throw a lunchbox out in front of the city halls for all of us council members so we can say hello and be able to chit chat for a little bit. Can I see the hands of?
As long as you stay six feet apart, I guess. I'm not sure, so.
I think we could do that.
We will take that under advisement. All right, we are adjourned.